Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. Mike Van Oesdale is the pastor at Church of the Harvest. Mike is going to lead this large group in our invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilwoman Sawyer as she'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Thank you. Let's bow our heads. Father God, we thank you so much for this great day gathering all of us here together. And we thank you for everything going on here today, Lord. We pray for all the proceedings. I pray for all of the city council members, all the city officials of Oklahoma City today. Lord bless them in all that they do in their personal and professional lives. And God, we just pray for all of our decision making here today. And thank you again for the opportunity to live out this free democracy of this country. And, uh, Lord, we just invite your presence here today. God, we pray for a divine wisdom, knowledge, God, that just surpasses all of our natural. Lord, we invite you here. Lord, we love you. We thank you for your son. We pray today in his holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have several things to discuss this morning, and we're going to start with some good news for our library system. Uh, Tim Rogers is here. Tim operates what I think is one of the best library systems in the United States. I think we're fortunate that the citizens of Oklahoma City have dedicated themselves to having a quality library system. Years ago, they had a dedicated funding stream just to the libraries. And I can't tell you how many other cities around the country go into budget times and have to start cutting their library system. We've never had to do that due to the wisdom of the generations ahead of us that realized libraries are important and they don't need to be the subject of this year or this month's budget concern. So, Tim is here today with a citation, and I'm going to have the clerk read the citation. But in general, we have received some additional money that's going to make Tim's efforts at the library even easier. Thank you. Francis, go ahead.
Whereas the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation has established itself as the 21st century Andrew Carnegie for Public Libraries and the people and communities they serve. Whereas the Gates Foundation was a pioneer in understanding the risk of the digital divide and the importance of digital inclusion. The Gates Foundation challenged public libraries to become technology leaders and provided millions of dollars to help libraries become go-to resources and trusted guides in an increasingly digital world. Whereas the Gates Foundation provided a significant investment to develop Edge, a national technology benchmarking system created to ensure that public libraries have the right technology to meet today's needs and the promise of tomorrow. Whereas with its commitment to ensuring that all people have access to the opportunities they need to succeed in school and life, the Gates Foundation has had a profound impact in communities across the country. The work of the Gates Foundation has enhanced the capacity, value, and power of public libraries as vital community assets. Whereas the Metropolitan Library System and the residents of Oklahoma City have benefited from the vision, commitment, and support of the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby thank the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation for its groundbreaking work in support of public libraries. And he further hereby recognizes and appreciates the importance of the Metropolitan Library System as an essential community resource to support community goals, meet the diverse education needs of our residents from birth through senior years, and ensure equal access to the opportunities of the 21st century.
Let's show our appreciation for the library system. And, uh, Tim, you were, you were telling me beforehand that this is hundreds of thousands of dollars from the Gates Foundation that goes to technology in some of our lesser served areas. So you can tell us more.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, and thank you for citing this. Certainly, the Gates Foundation has provided over a quarter of a million dollars over the last few years to provide technology at our Ralph Ellison Library, Southern Oaks, Capitol Hill, Almonte Libraries, as well as several other libraries across the metro area. Without this funding, it would fall to the, the library system to try to provide and keep up with this technology. Through the generosity of the Gates Foundation, uh, they've given over a billion dollars to libraries nationwide. And I, I think that, uh, as you said, uh, the Metropolitan Library System is one of the largest educational institutions here in the county. And certainly, we want to ensure that we have that technology so that kids can graduate from high school, uh, folks can get jobs and, and get promoted in their jobs. And then certainly, we all have the ability to make better decisions for our lives, for our families, and for our communities. And it's, it's, uh, gifts like this from the Gates Foundation, as well as certainly the generosity of the, uh, the folks here in the city, uh, that allow us to do that. So thank you again for all that you do.
Thank you, Tim. Let's show one more round of applause. Thank you. All right. Next up, I'm going to ask our representatives for White Cane Safety Day to come up. That's, let's see, Debbie Trout, Lauren Branch, Vicki Golightly, and the others. Let's just bring everybody up. But we have three organizations that are represented today. And October 15th is going to be White Cane Safety Day in Oklahoma City. So that's later this week. And I'll ask the clerk to read the proclamation as we get settled.
Whereas the white cane is used by hundreds of Oklahoma City residents who are legally blind in order to navigate our city and access its public places, schools, and businesses. Whereas with proper training, people using the white cane can enjoy greater mobility and safety by determining the location of curbs, steps, and even pavement and other physical obstacles in their path. The white cane has opened the doors of opportunity to thousands of blind Oklahomans by enabling them to travel freely and independently in their communities. Whereas the white cane is now universally recognized as a symbol of blindness that improves the safety of blind pedestrians by alerting drivers when a visually impaired person is crossing a street, parking area, or other areas open to the public. Oklahoma law requires drivers to come to a full stop at least 15 feet away from a visually impaired pedestrian using a white cane or dog guide and to take such precautions before proceeding as may be necessary to avoid accident or injury to the person who is wholly or partially blind. Whereas to honor the many achievements of blind and visually impaired citizens and to recognize the significance of the white cane in advancing independence, the United States Congress by joint resolution approved October 6th, 1964, has designated October 15th of each year as White Cane Safety Day. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim October 15th as White Cane Safety Day in Oklahoma City. And he urges citizens to observe this day by recognizing the significance of the white cane both as a symbol of independence and as a simple tool that enables Oklahoma City residents with visual disabilities to participate more fully in the social and economic life of our city and state.
Let's show our appreciation to these individuals who have brought so many wonderful opportunities to people. Vicki Golightly is with the Heartland Council of the Blind. Vicki?
Miss, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, city council, and city government leaders. Again, it's a pleasure for the Heartland Council of the Blind to be here today, this time in partnership with New View Oklahoma and Visual Services, a division of the Department of Rehabilitation Services. The Heartland Council of the Blind is a group of blind, visually impaired, and sighted individuals that are interested in rehabilitation and support for individuals who have gone blind or are, or who have been blind all their lives. We seek to give back to the community. And White Cane Day is another day that is recognized nationally, as you heard in the proclamation. This year, the three organizations will be celebrating White Cane Safety Awareness Day on October 15th, Saturday, from 11 to 1:00 at Penn Square. We'll be doing a walk down there. The mayor's proclamation will be again shared, and there will be some tables that will have informational booths. We, we want to enlighten everybody on the independence that the white cane and dog guides give to blind people throughout the nation.
Thank you, Vicki. Debbie?
Yes. Hi, I'm Debbie Trout. I'm an orientation and mobility specialist for the blind through the Department of Rehab Services, Visual Services. And I can't tell you how wonderful it is that the city of Oklahoma City is helping us celebrate White Cane Day. White canes represent independence and freedom for persons with disabilities. There are active citizens in this community. They spend their money here. They live here. And I would love for you guys to come out to Penn Square and play with us with some of the gizmos and gadgets and the canes. And I can't tell Oklahoma City, the council, and Mayor Cornet, how much we appreciate the sidewalks, the transit system, and the audible pedestrian signals. Those just increase my clients' ability to be at the same level of their non-disabled peers where they can be independent. So thank you guys for your MAPS money and for all you do. And I'm one of those people that I'm out walking the streets with my clients, and I love your sidewalks.
Thank you very much. Lauren with New View.
I'm Lauren Branch, and I'm with New View Oklahoma. We're a service provider for people who are blind here in the state of Oklahoma. We're also the largest employer of people who are blind in the state. And I just want to thank the city of Oklahoma City and Mayor Cornet for raising awareness of, uh, of the white cane and the significance of the white cane and, and how it works to create independence for people who are blind and visually impaired in, uh, in our community. Secondly, I'm just proud to be standing here this year with the Heartland Council of the Blind and the Department of Rehabilitation Services, um, celebrating the accomplishments of people who are blind and visually impaired in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We really appreciate all the work that you all do. Thank you. All right. Next up, we're going to offer our Teacher of the Month, a big honor. Tiffany Massey. Where's Tiffany? Yeah, come on up, Tiffany. Tiffany teaches special ed in middle school in Mustang. And we have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get scheduled.
Whereas Tiffany Massey was named the Teacher of the Year for the 2015 to 16 school year for Canyon Ridge Intermediate School in the Mustang Public School District. Whereas Tiffany received her bachelor's degree in speech-language pathology from the University of Science and Arts of Oklahoma and has been teaching for 19 years. Whereas Tiffany moved from speech-language pathology and gravitated to a special needs classroom where she is a well of unlimited patients who seize only the possibilities and students who suffer from severe cognitive or physical disabilities. Whereas Tiffany was recognized as the 2015 to 16 Mustang Public Schools District Teacher of the Year out of 14 site teachers of the year. Whereas she was also named Teacher of the Year for Mustang Trails Elementary for the 2010-11 school year. Out of more than 500 public school districts in Oklahoma, Tiffany was named one of the 12 finalists for Oklahoma State Teacher of the Year and is the first finalist for Mustang since 2009. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Tiffany Massey on her selection as October 2016 Teacher of the Month by Mustang Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Picking one teacher out of a city this big is not easy. So let's hear it for Tiffany Massey.
What an honor it is to stand here in front of all of you today. Thank you. Thank you very much, city councilman. Um, I am so blessed to be the one that was chosen. And being a teacher of students with disabilities and being recognized in this way is just amazing. And, and what an awesome day to get to follow you guys. So I got to learn, um, something new. I actually have a student who uses a cane daily, so I can't wait to take that information back to him. Thank you again. What an honor.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll, uh, I'm going to, um, ask your husband to stand up too. Tiffany's husband is with the Oklahoma Highway Patrol. We appreciate your service too. Thank you. Thanks very much. We have to vote on this, Tiffany. I'm a little concerned about this one. All right, cast your votes. Oh, how about that? It's unanimous. All right, congratulations. Uh huh. Thanks for reminding me on that. All right. I think Carrie Blument is here. Uh, Carrie, where are you? Yeah, come on up. We have something exciting going on in South Oklahoma City that's going to get people out of their houses and businesses and celebrating the wonderful opportunities we have to congregate with everyone. And this is a, a, a program by the Oklahoma City County Board of Health she works for, and it's called Open Streets OKC, and it's coming up here in just a couple of weeks. So listen to the details because we'd like to get as many thousands of people out to this event as we can.
Whereas the city of Oklahoma City has prioritized the health and well-being of all its residents. And whereas active transportation promotes healthier residents with closer ties to their community. The more residents who choose active transportation, the greater impact we have on halting the rise of obesity rates. Whereas Open Streets OKC reclaims part of a busy street for a few hours for non-motorized activity. Everyone is invited to celebrate the recreational fun at Wiley Post Park and meet local business owners as they walk, bike, skate, or board down South Robinson Avenue to the festive atmosphere of the historic Capitol Hill Business District in Oklahoma City. Whereas Oklahoma City County Health Department and its partners are hosting Open Streets OKC from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM on Sunday, October 23rd, from Wiley Post Park down South Robinson Avenue to Southwest 29th Street. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim October 23rd as Open Streets OKC Day in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation. Give us the details again.
Um, Open Streets is in its third year. We have typically been on the northwest side of Oklahoma City, and so we're very excited to be, um, on the south side of Oklahoma City. And the route that we're doing this year is really a connecting venue from the north and south side of Oklahoma City. So it will be on Nor, uh, South Robinson from Southwest 15th all the way down to Southwest 29th. And it will include Wiley Post Park as well as activities on the Oklahoma River. Um, so please come out, October 23rd, 1:00 to 5:00 PM. And really, the event is to promote active transportation, physical activity, um, so really showing people that, um, you can be active in your community and you can walk places and bike places. And so there will be no cars on the street for about four hours.
It's really a street party, isn't it? For everyone. So encourage everyone on the, is it the 23rd? Is that what you said?
October 23rd.
October, Sunday afternoon, October 23rd, South Robinson between 15th and 29th Street. And these events attract thousands. So we expect this one to be just as big as the, as the past few. And thank you in the county health department for all you do and for drawing attention to people getting out and being healthy. Thank you. Let's show our appreciation to the county health department. Thank you. All right. I'll ask our firefighters to come forward. Where are they hiding? Here we are. Our chief Keith Bryant, his deputies. And, uh, this probably a good time as any. We, uh, we had a groundbreaking for a new fire station yesterday in Oklahoma City on Southwest 29th near May Avenue, Woodson Park. It's one of two that are currently under construction that'll open up next summer. But right now, we're going to talk about the fight that this is Fire Prevention Month. And it never hurts to remind ourselves that fires are still very much a part of our lives in the 21st century. Not like it was maybe 100 years ago. It's different. Through all the fire safety measures we've taken through the years and the investments we've made in public safety, we've really cut down the number of fires in Oklahoma City. But still, every year, people die because of what could be prevented, uh, uh, fire situation. So I'm going to have a proclamation read, and then we'll ask the, the fire chief to give us some straight-up advice on how we can avoid being a victim.
Whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department responded to over 75,000 calls for emergency assistance in 2015. Whereas during that same year, fire killed seven of our citizens, injured 28 others, and caused property loss in excess of $21 million. Whereas the men and women of the Oklahoma City Fire Department are witness to the loss and devastation caused by fire firsthand, not only for those citizens who have lost loved ones or their homes and belongings to fire, but for their coworkers injured or killed in the line of duty. Whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department is actively engaged in year-round public education programs to raise awareness of fire safety to help prevent the frequency and severity of fires in our city. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October as Fire Prevention Month in Oklahoma City. And he encourages all citizens to learn about fire prevention and fire safety and apply these practices at home, at work, and throughout our city.
Let's hear it for our first responders.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, I couldn't agree more with the comments that you made about fire prevention and fire safety. And obviously, uh, we have a lot of effort going on in that regard throughout the year, but October is obviously the month that we, we really try and emphasize it. Uh, and I introduce the members of our staff real quick down there. Our public education officer Chad Adams, uh, chief over code enforcement Harold Thompson, obviously our, our fire marshal, Deputy Chief Kelly Sawyers. Um, yeah, a lot of work that goes on, on, in this regard. It's not the work of the department that catches the headlines that you see in the newspapers and on TV, but to, as far as I'm concerned, it's definitely the work that's actually saving lives. When we give somebody a smoke alarm, which we do quite a bit through our Project Life initiative, and, uh, that alarm alerts them to get out of their home in time, and that's a life saved. And we don't look at it that way enough, but, uh, again, a lot of effort. And then that's where we're really, uh, doing a lot of good to protect our citizens. Just real quick, I mean, I had to, our former fire marshal for the city, sitting back there in the back of the room, Deputy Chief John Seuss. And I wanted to recognize him and the other retirees of our department that are sitting here this morning because they certainly did a lot of They certainly did a lot of work during their careers in this effort as well. And again, I appreciate their service to the city. So thank you for recognizing that. And again, we want everybody to be thinking about this month. Test your smoke alarm. If you need a new battery, replace it. If you need any help with that, or if you need a smoke alarm in your home, let us know and we'll be glad to get you one.
That's a great reminder. If, if you know of someone who doesn't have a smoke alarm in their house, call the fire department. They will come out and install it. If the batteries are out, they'll put new batteries in it. We, we're not concerned about, uh, the cost of the smoke alarm or the battery that we're putting in it. We want to save lives. So thank you all for what you do. Chief, thank you. Yeah, see you guys. And I'll ask Jerita Baker to come up. I said Baker, Becker. Jerita works at our animal control shelter on Southeast 29th Street. And out of over 4,000 employees with the Oklahoma City City Government, she is our Employee of the Month. Congratulations. How about that? I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution.
Whereas Jerita Becker has been a city employee for 10 years and is, and is an administrative specialist in the Animal Welfare Division of the Development Services Department. Whereas Jerita manages all administrative duties, including human relations and finance, and assists with collateral development, social media, and marketing. Jerita also oversees several programs, including adoption outreach, the pet food banks, bay and neuter, and the internet internal safety program. Whereas Jerita is consistent, extremely competent, and highly respected by the animal welfare staff. Whereas Jerita has taken on many responsibilities this year and has done so with intention and grace. Whereas Jerita works hard and is always available to help others with their duties. Whereas Jerita spends many hours on weekends attending special events to assist her staff in any way she can, and she is heavily leaned on by her coworkers for her extensive knowledge of city policy and procedure. Jerita excels in her role at animal welfare thanks to her organizational skills and passion for animals. Whereas this council desires to recognize Jerita Becker for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Jerita Becker, October 2016, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Let's hear it for Jerita. Jerita, we have to vote on this one too. So I know everybody's tense. And it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And let me, let me just speak a, a few moments about the work that Jerita and her coworkers do down at the animal shelter. I don't know of any department in city government that has come as far as fast as this department. Thousands of animals' lives are being saved yearly now that were not being saved in, in a, in a previous time. In fact, there was one moment, I guess it was a few months ago, that we actually had every animal that was adoptable out of the shelter. So 230 animals adopted in one day. Now, the sobering side to that is the next day, there were new animals brought in. And, and, and Jerita and her friends down at the animal shelter still had plenty of work to do. But it is a, a big success story for a city our size to actually empty the cages from all the adoptable animals that were in there and to get them into the home of someone who would, who would care and take care of them. So the need continues, but we're doing a lot better than we were. And Jerita, we thank you. And please pass along our appreciation to your coworkers. Jerita Becker. All right. It's Arts and Humanities Month. Let's have the people representing our arts community come forward. Carrie, you don't get to stand against the wall. You have to come up. My, my wife is here, and we don't get a visit from her very fre, very often. So we want to bring her down here and have her stand as, uh, very active in the arts community. We have a proclamation. And before we hear from Ann, I'll ask the clerk to read the proclamation.
Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts, humanities, and cultural organizations, community, and states across the country. Whereas since our earliest days, Oklahoma City has flourished because of the creative spirit and vision of our residents. We rely on the arts and humanities to broaden our views and our understanding of our nation and the world. The arts and humanities play an important role in telling our city's story and reminding us of the truths that connect us. The insight that comes from watching a thought-provoking documentary or discovering a compelling novel sparks moments of joy, awe, and sorrow. From symphonies that bring tragedy to life to architecture that challenges the boundaries of the world around it, these works add texture to our lives and reveal the spirit of our city. Whereas cultivating the talents and minds of our young people and ensuring they have access to the arts and humanities is critical to our city's growth and prosperity. To meet the challenges ahead, we must harness the skills and ingenuity of our children and grandchildren and instill in them the same passion and persistence that has driven our city's progress and innovation. Whereas this month, we pay tribute to the tremendous power of the arts and humanities to bring us together and expose us to new ideas. And as we carry forward this proud tradition, let us celebrate the ways our city's rich heritage has strengthened our state and inspired our lives. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October as Arts and Humanities Month in Oklahoma City. And he calls upon residents to celebrate the arts and humanities in our city and encourage greater participation by all citizens in taking action for the arts and humanities in our neighborhood, schools, and all areas across our city.
Let's show our appreciation to the arts. Ann Thompson is here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Cornet.
Thank you, Mayor Cornet, and thank you, City Council. And I'm Ann Thompson, the Executive Director of Oklahoma Humanities. I'm joined by the Arts Council of Oklahoma City, Allied Arts, and Oklahoma City Arts Commission, sorry. We also have representatives from Oklahomans for the Arts. Lots of organizations in our city promote the arts and humanities because we recognize, as this proclamation so beautifully said, the enrichment that we get from the arts and the humanities, whether it's attending a symphony, or a lecture, or an art exhibit. K-12 students benefit from this, our senior citizens in Oklahoma City do. These organizations work tirelessly on behalf of all citizens of Oklahoma City. Get to know them this month of Arts and Humanities Month. Look on the paper and the calendars of all of our websites for those opportunities that you can participate in. Enjoy yourselves. Learn about who you are, who your neighbors are, and thank you so much for this opportunity that does bring attention to how enriching the arts and humanities are in our lives. Thank you again.
You bet, and we do appreciate the arts. Thank you very much. Thank you. You bet, love. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Thank you. Thank you. All right, and we have another special guest in the audience today. I'm looking for Wes. Did you finally sit down? Wes, why don't you bring your family up here with you, if you don't mind. Yeah, let's bring everybody up here. While they're making their way up there, we have bestowed a special day to an athlete just a handful of times in the time I've been mayor. And to a certain extent, we've been kind of waiting for Wes Welker to eventually end his illustrious career before we could have this day in his honor. I am reminded, and probably time to point out, Ray Soldan, who some of you will know, a Daily Oklahoman sports reporter, who covered high school football from the '50s till 2002, said that Wes Welker was the greatest high school football player in Oklahoma State history. That is no small feat when you think of the tens of thousands of young men who have played high school football. You're going to hear the statistics in the resolution that we go, and I want you to listen to them. Some of them are remarkable, but I think there's a larger story here with Wes. Despite having this incredible high school career, Wes was not heavily recruited out of high school, and perhaps you want to touch on that. But needless to say, colleges weren't lining up to bring in a guy of Wes's size and stature into their program. Well, a few years later, after he was an All-American at Texas Tech, the NFL made the same mistake. Again, Wes was not highly sought after when the NFL started looking at college players. And after over 10 years, and gosh, an incredible number of appearances in playoff games and in Pro Bowls, Wes Welker retires as one of the most prolific wide receivers in NFL history. Let's hear the proclamation.
Whereas Wes Welker was born May 1, 1981, in Oklahoma City. Whereas Wes Welker's football career started at Heritage Hall High School, and during his junior year, he led the Chargers to a 2A Oklahoma State Football Championship. Whereas Wes Welker's Heritage Hall career included 80 touchdowns as a running back, 53 rushing, and 27 receiving, 190 tackles, 22 interceptions, and nine fumble recoveries as a defensive back, seven touchdowns as a punt returner, and 35 field goals and 165 extra points as a kicker, including a 58-yard field goal. Whereas in 1999, Wes Welker was selected by the Daily Oklahoman as All-State Player of the Year, and by USA Today as Oklahoma State Player of the Year. Whereas Wes Welker's success in football continued at Texas Tech University, and he joined the San Diego Chargers as an undrafted free agent in 2004. Whereas he also played for the Miami Dolphins, the New England Patriots, Denver Broncos, and the St. Louis Rams. Whereas only one player in NFL history, Gale Sayers, had more all-purpose yards in his first three NFL seasons than Wes Welker did with the Dolphins. As a Patriot, he led the league in receptions in 2007, 2009, and 2011. Whereas Welker is given back to the community through the Wes Welker Foundation. Its goal is to influence at-risk youth by encouraging their full potential through athletics and positive role models, and it works primarily benefits the schools and other organizations in his hometown of Oklahoma City. Whereas Wes Welker has represented Oklahoma City's values of hard work and big dreams through his on-the-field accomplishments and off-the-field philanthropic efforts. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim October 11th as Wes Welker Day in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation. Congratulations. It's really an honor to have you here.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Mick Cornet. Thank you so much for this honor. Councilmen, thank you all so much for having us here today. I'd like to introduce my family, my wife Anna, my daughter Caroline, my mom Shelley, my son Carter, my dad Leland, and my grandmother Ruth. Thank you. And they were just as much a part of this as anybody, through all the times of supporting me, good and bad, and so I thank you all for all that. As Mayor Mick Cornet talked about, you know, there were so many trials and tribulations to kind of get to this point, and you know, it's finally got to that point where I can kind of relax and kind of say, oh, and then we have two kids, and that pretty much went out the window. But no, it was definitely such a trying time and being able to get to this point. And there's a lot of hours and a lot of hard work and a lot of things behind the scenes that nobody sees that goes into all this. And I think that's part of the reason why I really started the Wes Welker Foundation is for so many guys that I played with through high school, through junior high, through college, the pros, it goes on and on, but so many just didn't have positive role models growing up. And obviously, I had two great ones here, three great ones here. And just having that and having those role models to look up to of what it takes and how hard it is to work, and beyond that, having the facilities and the athletic, where Fields and Futures is here, Tim Liz McGough, and who have been doing fields all over Oklahoma City and in coordination with the MAPS projects and what they've been doing, it's been such a cool deal to see the steps that we've taken to really kind of bring these kids along and let them have a sense of pride in what they're doing out there on the field and pride in their school and pride in what they're trying to accomplish going forward. So I appreciate everybody letting us come here today, Mayor. Really appreciate everything.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Thank goodness for you. and Roy Williams is here. Roy is the President of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, and Roy comes in quarterly to give the council an update on the economic development opportunities that he and his staff are working on. Good morning, Roy.
Good morning, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, the acting city manager. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. There's about six things I really want to cover very quickly, some of which you may be familiar with, probably most of which you might not be familiar with, and then certainly be happy to answer any questions you might have. First thing I wanted to mention was, some of you were involved in this, but just to remind you, last week, we had the opening of the GE Global Oil and Gas Technology Center. That is a huge, huge win for this community, and will continue to be a big win for this community. So they are now officially opened in their new facility, and if you get invited to see it, I suggest you do. It is world-class. I also had the opportunity at the opening to interact directly with Vic Abate, who is the Chief Technology Officer of GE, and Lorenzo Semenelli, who is the President and CEO of GE Oil and Gas. They both talked about the plans for the growth of that facility here in Oklahoma City and the strong interest that they have in working in the Innovation District, and I'll touch on that in just a minute. But I would just sum it up by saying that I think it's very safe to say there's a lot of growth potential in GE's presence here in Oklahoma City. And speaking of the Innovation District, a lot of progress continues on the Innovation District study. Some of you are involved. We have about six months left of the 18-month schedule that we are on. There are currently four different task forces that are diligently at work in it. Brookings Institute and Project for Public Spaces continue to bring national and international benchmarking and best practices to us to look at. The four areas that we're currently focused on is, one is place-making, considering what kind of programming you put in the Innovation District to really maximize connectivity. The second is innovation, and that being a technical group that is considering, how do we focus on encouraging innovation within the area? The third has to do with governance, how the governance of the Innovation District will work, what that structure will look like. And lastly, the mission statement. We're in the process of finalizing the mission and vision statement of the Innovation District. From Brookings, during the week of September 26, we had staff who was in town and working with the task forces about collaboration. So we had representatives from OMRF, from GE, from OU, including the Health Science Center of the Price College of Business, Tech Transfer, along with I2E and the Midtown Renaissance, to talk about the intersections of technology. And this is really kind of where the rubber meets the road between the different industry sectors of healthcare and biotechnology, energy, aviation, and those include cross-cutting technologies that impact all of these in robotics, in remote sensing, in data analytics, in infomatics, and in imaging. So those are four areas we're really going to focus on, and we're looking at putting together various industry sectors and putting on a symposium for each of these, because all of these different industry sectors have a focus in these areas and looking across these industries to see how they can collaborate is very important. Brookings also met with a larger coalition group who identified a number of goals for future work, and I can get into those should the council be interested. One thing I've always mentioned when I've come up here, and that is about the number of cities who continually come to Oklahoma City on their intercity visits. Just in the last couple of weeks, we've had four of them. Hot Springs, Arkansas was here. Edmonton, Canada was here. The Southwest Indiana Chamber, Evansville, was here. And in the next couple of weeks, Albuquerque, New Mexico is coming back, actually for their second intercity visit. So interest in our region really continues to be high. Third thing I want to mention is, or fourth thing really, is criminal justice. Y'all know that our task force continues to work through a number of issues on this, and in fact, we have a half-day meeting planned today just on this, where we're going to review the first draft recommendations from the Vera Institute of Justice, and that hopefully will help us prioritize on how we improve safety, how we improve efficiency, and how we reduce incarceration in our county jail. I also want to publicly thank the city's task force members who've been a part of this. The mayor's been on the task force, City Manager Jim Couch, Assistant Manager M.T. Berry, and Police Chief City have all been extremely active on the task force. They've given a great deal of their time, as has other city employees who have helped, especially in data collection. So everyone involved in this project has really learned a great deal about our criminal justice system. And we've also learned that one of the most important components of it is good data and good information, and that's an area that can certainly be improved at all levels. And I would conclude by just saying, we anticipate releasing a comprehensive set of recommendations probably within the next couple of weeks at the latest. A fifth area I want to mention, and that has to do with talent. Earlier this year, the chamber brought in an external team, a consultant, to do an analysis of our region's talent and workforce needs, and that data, both qualitative analysis and direct input from employers, led us to launch what we call the next generation of our talent programming. We've been in this for about a decade, but now we see a new need and a new trend. And there's really three components of this new strategy. One is enhanced incumbent worker training through employer-training collaboration. A second is the pipeline development of middle-skill jobs, and the third is enhanced recruitment of talent to our marketplace. These efforts will be very collaborative, where we're really brokering partnerships between different industry groups, between employers from multiple industry sectors, and education providers, which are critical. So we're looking at best practices across the country to see how other communities have addressed this. One of the startling facts is that the data shows that 80% of the workers who are going to be in our workplace in 10 years are in the workforce today. So helping our companies keep those people, train those people, make them ready for what their new and next challenge is going to be, is a very critical part of ensuring we have the workforce for tomorrow for our companies to be competitive. We also have heard from companies that they need a lot of help, tools, and support for recruiting out-of-market talent. So we're really expanding our service level in that area. So we'll be sharing more and more of what we're doing in that area. The last thing I just want to highlight is the Oklahoma City Public School bond issue. The school district called for a bond election on November 8. We, the chamber, have formed the Maintain OKC Schools Committee to urge the passage of this bond issue. Just yesterday, we had a coalition meeting of over 30 different entities who have pledged their support to work with us in this campaign effort. And obviously, we believe this is a worthwhile effort for new roofs, for safety enhancement, for HVAC replacements, et cetera, as well as continually improving and replacing transportation and technology. The interesting thing about this ballot is it's going to be a yellow ballot. All the other ballots are white, but this particular ballot will be yellow. So please be sure you share with all your friends to pay attention to the yellow ballot, and that will help our school district. With that, I'll stop and be happy to answer any questions.
All right. And yeah, so the school bond issue is going to be on the big election in November, and so it's going to be easy to get lost in all of the state questions and other individuals that you have the opportunity to vote for. But very important, I think, to the progress of the city that we continue to invest in the capital needs of that intercity district. So if you live in the intercity and you have the opportunity to vote, look for that yellow ballot. Yellow ballot, all right.
Looks like a school bus.
I just want to ask you briefly about the potential implications of State Question 779, the one-cent sales tax increase. As I'm sure you know, probably the supermajority of the last two years, the cities come up short on sales tax projections, the supermajority of those last 24 months, say. So that's less money for all services. This is the only state in America where we can't access property tax or income tax for operations. So I don't know if there's any chance you happened to see the editorial in the Oklahoman this morning that made the argument that an increase in sales tax through a constitutional amendment would have the propensity to drive people to online sales, or to online activity. The margins are so tight in retail, if you have a 10% advantage in shopping online versus bricks and mortar, more and more people will shop online, and that would be an impact to the city. Is there empirical data, or is there data out there that quantifies at what point you start to drive people to shop online, which would then impact what we're trying to do here as a city?
I have not seen any, but I would certainly think there is some. I would think that there is a tolerance level at some point where, you know, the scale tips, and that it would drive people to other locations, other geographies, and/or to online purchases. Just as a matter of record, the... Just as a matter of record, the Chamber is formally on record as opposing it. We believe, and we've supported teacher pay raises. We actively were at the legislature in the session. We were the ones who actually went to the governor, asked her to call a special session, went to the House and Senate leadership to call a special session strictly for teacher pay raises. We're concerned that we're throwing about $615 million to about a $300 million problem, and that it should be resolved a different way, because we definitely believe in the teacher pay raise. We just don't believe this is the process, and it is not, it is much more money than actually what you need for a pay raise. But directly to your point, I have not seen a study or data, but I would concur that there has to be a point at which people are going to alternatively shop if the price goes up.
Okay. And along those same lines, I mean, you've worked on the development of a regional transit authority, studying that for, I don't know how many years, two or three years. We've finished-
Seems like a lifetime.
Yeah. We did a one-and-a-half-million-dollar study. All the municipalities are on board. I'm not aware of any city in America that's been able to do that without a regional transit authority. And I've never heard of one that didn't have a dedicated funding source, including maybe a sales tax component. So I'm wondering, what are the potential implications if 779 passes? You have a constitutional amendment with a permanent one-cent sales tax. What does that potentially mean to the development of a regional transit authority and those transit plans?
Well, I think it not only has, you know, potential negative consequences to transit, it also has potential negative consequences to us being able to deal with our criminal justice system and the infrastructure that that might take, our ability to do significant infrastructure in the community, like we've done with MAPS programming, as well as any other, as well as any other kinds of capital infrastructure that our community may see in years to come. We don't know what really that is. But I think the voters, at some point in time, will say, this is enough. And they will not be willing to tax themselves further. And as a result, we won't be able to continue to perhaps make the transformational progress we've been making in our region.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Roy?
You mentioned the Criminal Justice Task Force findings and recommendations are going to be coming out in the next two or three weeks. For those of us that want to look at that closely, review it, analyze it, will it be on the Chamber website?
Yes, yes. In fact, the entire Vera study will be. And kind of how this works is we've been, we've been putting some information out there, but now we're at the point of Vera actually giving us, based on all the research they have done, their recommendations. And I believe I saw yesterday that there are 29 of them. So it's the job of the task force to go through each one of those and decide from a priority standpoint, what do we want to recommend back to the county on that. So what we end up doing will certainly be transparent, will certainly be out there for everybody to look at, and to see the data that was behind it that led to those recommendations.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Roy? All right. Roy, we appreciate your work. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
All right. Item 3 also has a series of appointments. I'll look for a motion. All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. 4A is to receive the journal for September 27th and October 4th. And 4B is to approve the journal for September 13th. All right. Cast your votes on the journal. Passed unanimously. And item 5 is a request for uncontested continuances.
Yes, Mayor, there are several this morning. Beginning on page 12, we've had a request to defer item 7, AM 2, to October 25th. And then moving on to page 23, item 9, F1A, 936 East Drive, we'd like to strike that. It is owner-occupied, and Community Action Agency Repair Project is ongoing. Moving on to item 9, G1A, 5208 Cobble Street, we'd like to strike that. The owner has secured. Item B, 917 Harris Avenue, we'd like to strike that. The owner has secured. Item G, 1507 Northwest 16th Street, we'd like to strike that, to re-notify. Item I, 711 Northeast 28th Street, we'd like to strike that. The owner has secured. Item K, 1132 Northwest 34th Street, we'd like to strike that. The owner has secured. Item L, 2212 Northwest 37th Street, we'd like to strike that. The owner has secured. Item M, 133 Southwest 46th Street, we'd like to strike that. The owner has secured. Item N, 5516 Northwest 107th Street, we'd like to strike that. The owner has secured. Moving on to page 24, item 9, H1A, 5208 Cobble Street, we'd like to strike that. The owner has secured. Item B, 936 East Drive, we'd like to strike that. It is owner-occupied, and there is a Community Action Agency Repair Project underway. Item C, 917 Harris Avenue, we'd like to strike that. The owner has secured. Item I, 1507 Northwest 16th Street, strike that to re-notify. Item K, 711 Northeast 28th Street, we'd like to strike that. The owner has secured. Item M, 1132 Northwest 34th Street, we'd like to strike that. The owner has secured. Item N, 2212 Northwest 37th Street, we'd like to strike that. The owner has secured. And finally, item O, 5516 Northwest 107th Street, we'd like to strike that. The owner has secured.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right. Item 6 is revocable permits. We have six organizations that are holding events here in Oklahoma City. The first is a Date with Iris LLC is wanting to host the Harry Potter Festival OKC. Is anyone here representing that event? Good morning. Are you Stephanie? All right. Stephanie, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Stephanie Humes, and it's 2824 Northwest 15th.
All right. Tell us about the Harry Potter Festival.
This is our second year. Last year, we held a little, it actually was in July last year, but there was construction for a streetscape on Western taking place this year, so we've moved it to October. But this year, it's, we decided to close down some streets and add some more activities and things more, we have a few food trucks and the library and science museums coming out, so it'll be a lot of fun, free activity things.
I think you've got some great partners. It's in Ward 2. Ed?
Yeah, my kids are going to be excited. I move approval.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Have fun, Stephanie. And that event will be on October 16th on Northwestern Avenue between 39th and 42nd Street. All right. Next is a request with the Oklahoma City County Health Department to hold Open Streets OKC. And we got a preview of what that's all about earlier this morning. Good morning.
Good morning. Darren Ransley, 11124 Kingswick Drive, Oklahoma City.
Hi, Gerald. Tell us about your event.
As you heard earlier from Kerry Blumert, Open Streets this year, we're requesting October the 23rd. The revocable permit will be 11 o'clock in the morning through 6 o'clock in the afternoon, though the event will be 1 o'clock through 5. The roads that will be affected will be Robinson Road on the south side, that will start at Southwest 15th and go down to Southwest 29th. The roads will be closed down, but will be open to bicycle traffic, skateboards, walkers, anybody that brings their pets is going to be very, very welcome. We are going to take also Wiley Post Park as part of our footprint. There will be everything from soccer inflatables, there will be Ultimate Frisbee, there will be events that are going to be open to anybody to join in, and it's going to be physical exercise. The plan in reality is to invite people to health and wellness, get the body moving whilst we're on the streets. There are going to be up to 50 booths. Now, these booths, and we would normally call them vendors if we were having a street festival, street party, et cetera, but these booths will not be selling anything. They will be giving information, but there'll be no handouts, there'll be no paper takeaways. Information will be passed verbally, and also an opportunity to involve yourself in physical exercise or a program with each of the 50 vendors. There'll also be somewhere around about 20 food trucks. They will be on the north side and the south side of each junction, starting from Southwest 15th down to Southwest 29th. There'll be a huge variety of food trucks. Those food trucks also, to be part of our program, we have asked that they have at least one healthy option, so that people have an opportunity to take care of their bodies, if you will. It is open to everybody. We hope to see you there. We also are involving the River. One of the ties together for this program and the geographic location is Southwest 15th is north of the River. We go down to Southwest 17th, which is south, we're tying the River together. Our volunteers will come from many, many different organizations, corporations, but we're also involving the Oklahoma City Police Cadets this year, so they get to meet their community on both the north and south of the River. So we're hoping it's going to be very, very successful. This is year number three, our fifth event, the second which is going to be in that geographic location, including Capitol Hill. We're hoping for somewhere around about 10,000 people, and of course, we'll look at weather and see how that works out. But that is what we're going to do on October the 23rd.
Very exciting. And we really appreciate the emphasis on health and getting people outside and congregating in South Oklahoma City. So thanks to you for your work, and I'm sure the council couldn't be more supportive of this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It is in Wards 4, 6, and 7. And we have a motion from Ward 6, and we have a second from Ward 4. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks. All right. Item 6C is a request from OCU, Oklahoma City University, to hold the OCU Trick or Treat 5K. Anyone here representing this event? All right. Well, it's going to be on October 22nd, and it's in Ward 2. Oh, are you Sarah?
Yes, I am.
I am Sarah.
My name is Sarah Campbell, 2712 Northwest 64th Street. And I'm representing the Oklahoma City University PA Program. We are the first class, and we've decided to start our community health initiatives as students by hosting the Trick or Treatment 5K and One Mile Fun Run to be held on October 22nd at the OCU campus and in the surrounding neighborhood north of campus. This is a family-friendly activity. We'll have trick-or-treating and face painting throughout the 5K or through the fun run portion. And all the proceeds will be benefiting the J.D. McCarty Center, which is an Oklahoma organization, which provides housing and resources for Oklahoma's children with developmental and mental disabilities.
And should people dress up accordingly?
Yes, they are encouraged to dress safely in costume and join us for all the festivities.
All right. So kids and adults, welcome to dress up in their best Halloween-type outfit and be on the OCU campus, October 22nd for your 5K opportunity. Thanks for getting involved in this so soon after graduation. We really appreciate it. It sounds like it's going to be a lot of fun. And that's in Ward 2 as well. Ed? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks. All right. The next request is from the Prenatal Center of Oklahoma to hold the Rundown Scary Place. And are you Morgan?
Yes, I'm Morgan. The address is 4140 West Memorial.
Well, tell us about your event.
Our event is a rundown scary place, and we are raising money for Positive Tomorrow's, which is a school for homeless children. And it is also October 22nd, 10:00 a.m., and wear your best costumes. So there will be a fun run as well as a 5K.
Okay. So you can just run all morning, it sounds like?
For sure.
In your costume. October 22nd, North Indiana, where should people gather at the start? Where's the best gathering place?
Indiana and 16th.
Okay. So 16th and Indiana, near northwest Oklahoma City.
Uh huh.
All right. That's in Ward 6. Meg?
If people want to get involved, should they go to the Positive Tomorrow's website, or how do they?
To Perinatal Center of Oklahoma. We have a Facebook page that has a lot of information, and you can also, I think, message us on there.
Yeah, there's a website. It's also on Facebook.
Great. All righty. Thank you very much. I move approval.
All right. Cast your votes on 6D. It passed unanimously. Item 6E is a request from the Susan G. Coleman Breast Cancer Foundation to hold the Race for the Cure, also on October 22nd. And Alisa?
Good morning. Alisa Pope, address 11913 Whitney Way, Oklahoma City. See, it looks like the 22nd is a busy day. The Oklahoma City Race for the Cure, this is our 23rd year, and we will be just right outside the doors at City Hall over at Bicentennial Park and the Civic Center. We look, right now, the numbers look like anywhere from 8,000 to 10,000 participants for the event. At the event, we, this year, we've actually been able to partner with the YMCA to take over our Kids for the Cure component, so they will be out working with kids and doing an obstacle course to promote health and wellness with our children that are there at the event, who's there to support family or friends who's been impacted by breast cancer. Our vendors at the event are our community grantees, so you'll be able to see who we give our money to here locally in Oklahoma City in various counties. So although our race is here in Oklahoma City, we reach 47 different counties in the state of Oklahoma. So each one of our counties will be represented the day of the race.
All right. Alisa, thanks for your work on this. Congratulations for all the success, thousands of people out running. Is it a 5K?
It's a 5K, and then we also have a family one mile.
Okay. Meg?
All right, Alisa, thanks to see. I miss you on Park Avenue.
I know, I know. Well, we're still there, just above BC Park.
Upstairs, great. Well, move approval.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I will be there with my pink wig on. For those who don't know, I'm a part of the Susan G. Coleman, what is it called?
Big Wig.
Big Wig Campaign. So you'll see me across the city with a pink wig on. Good Lord almighty, pink wig. But I will do that in support of breast cancer, in support of those who are struggling with cancer.
Worth the price of admission in itself. Thank you.
That's right. And it matches my tie.
Yeah. All right. We need a motion on, all right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And our final request for a revocable permit comes from VI Marketing and Branding to hold the Carnadium. Does anyone hear from VI? Okay. No one has signed up, but this is their annual event. They hold on Park Avenue every year, and it brings in a lot of people and activities and a lot of good food.
Really fun. If anybody likes chili, come on down. It's always a great thing.
Nobody's running a 5K at this event. This is to eat, having been there.
And no healthy options.
That's right.
I don't know. I think there's turkey chili or something. Probably some vegetarian options, but it really is-
Right in the heart of downtown Oklahoma City. October 21st, which is, I guess, a Friday?
A Friday afternoon.
Yeah, Friday is when they usually do that. And we appreciate it. How about a motion on-
Move approval.
Carnadium. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. All right. We'll reset the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
Move that.
Is there a second on the MFA?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions here? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Will adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority?
Move the items.
All right. Again, five items. Comments or questions on the PPA? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Will adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just the claims and payroll today.
Move the items.
All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Will adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket?
Move the items. Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We also have a presentation from Bob Jamison with the City County Board of Health. Bob? This is on item AT.
Mayor, City Council members, we're very excited to make this request for tax increment financing for our efforts to build a new facility at, and co-locate with the Latino Development Community Agency, better known as LCDA. This request is going to involve our partners, OU physicians, hopefully North Care will join us for mental health services. join us for mental health services, but this is an area, southwest 10th and Walker, that we feel like can really benefit from our public health services and our partners that provide those, help us provide those services. We have, in the last five years, adopted a strategic plan to regionalize our services within the metroplex. Our first effort was in the northeast quadrant, where we located the current, where we're currently located, between MLK on 63rd, between MLK and I-35. That campus is pretty well-developed out. We're now working with Councilman Pete White to develop a south regional facility at southwest 69th and Walker, which is going to be located between the Southern Oaks Library and Parmerly Elementary School. So, that's in the final design stages now. But this facility, kind of midtown, we feel like will be a real benefit to those residents in that 73109 zip code and the surrounding zip codes. We're going to name it the Riverside Health and Wellness Center. The building that the LCDA currently occupies was, as I understand, was the old Riverside School, built in the early 1900s. We are going to, as I mentioned, co-locate. The facility is two-story, 12,530 square feet. We estimate the cost at 3.8 million. We're going to commit 2.3 million along with staffing, which is the larger expense over time, and we have made a request for TIF funding of 1.5 million. LCDA, they're going to commit with a long-term lease of that building site. We're anticipating a 100-year lease, and they will also provide staffing. Our partners, OU physicians, LCDA, Regional Food Bank, we hope to bring in some other partners too, so. This is the site plan. Walker is on the left, southwest 10th is at the top. The entrance to the building will be facing the east, and you can see the existing LCDA building, our building, and we will be adding 125 new parking spaces. This is the first-floor plan. This will be the area where most of the clinical services are provided, along with WIC. Most of our primary locations, we partner with OU physicians to provide primary healthcare. This is an effort to, I guess, bring in those types of services for those who do not have insurance or resources to pay for that primary care, and this will be another location where we will partner with OU to do that. Most of this is exam rooms, reception, waiting. WIC is, Women Infant and Children's Program is also provided there, so. Second floor is primarily office space. The lower and right quadrant is LCDA staff. The upper-left quadrant is OCCHD staff, and then the other areas will be offices, conference rooms, and halls, so. This is the architectural design we want to provide there. It fits in well with the Riverside School, the LCDA building, and there's a Catholic, I don't know how many of you are familiar with that area, but there's a Catholic church right across the street, and it's of the same architectural design. And to some degree, the Neighborhood Services Organization, which is adjacent to this building, NSO, is also, fits that design, so. Our planned clinical services, access to primary healthcare, as I mentioned, after-hours services. We don't know yet what those hours will be, but that's, we're planning to offer some of those services later in the day. Mental health services, referrals, health screenings, and I just want to interject here, this is going to give us another platform for our My Heart Program, which is a chronic disease intervention program. We train community health workers to be able to go out in the community and provide point-of-contact diagnostic testing such as cholesterol, do blood pressure, hypertension testing, and the, these community health workers can use equipment like Cholestatik to do that testing right there on-site and determine whether an individual has these types of issues. We do those throughout the community at barber shops, beauty shops, grocery stores, sporting events, and those who qualify and want to participate, we have a two-year program where we will provide the primary care services, the medications, if they need a statin, an anti-hypertensive medication, we provide those for two years, and we just ask them to participate in our Wellness Now classes, which teaches healthy lifestyles. We have dieticians, prescription drug consultation, referrals for additional services, case management. We try to put these clients who might tend to overuse acute care services such as emergency room, put them into a medical home where they can get that type of preventative care that keeps them out of the ER, so. Planned non-clinical services. We hope to, because of its location, we hope to partner with Oklahoma City Parks and Rec to participate in the walking trails, sports facilities through the maps, adjacent maps three park. We also provide, as I mentioned, Wellness Now classes on-site for cardiovascular disease, diabetes prevention, smoking cessation, weight loss, work site wellness, prenatal care, and senior health and wellness, so. We're asking for 1.5 million, and that will be allocated to help us construct that facility, so. Can I answer any questions?
Well, I think we're all very excited about the facility, and I know I appreciate the opportunity to be a partner in the capital side of the needs, and I know you guys are going to be handling the operational costs, which are going to be excessive. Yeah, Meg?
Just a quick question. It's incredibly exciting to have this happen down in this location, and the community is very grateful, I know for that. Will there be any renovations to the actual Riverside School building? Will there be any renovations to the LCDA building itself, or is this all-new construction?
Well, we're working on that. We have a discussion with Dr. Raoul Font.
Dr. Font.
Yeah, to perhaps do some type of lease, to renovate some space within that facility to expand our services, so.
Great. As you mentioned, that school is about 100 years old, and they've done a wonderful job, but partnering with them to be able to provide some additional renovation assistance would be terrific, so.
Especially smart.
It's a great building. And that church across the street is the Little Flower Church. It's been an incredibly vibrant part of the neighborhood for a very long time.
Really liked that area.
It is a wonderful, wonderful stretch of Walker.
Excited to go in there.
Thank you for being there.
All right, any other comments? All right, thank you very much. Comments from council on other things on the consent docket?
Mayor, I wanted to mention 7S and item BB.
Mayor, I'd just like to make a brief comment on AD, AE, two and six.
All right.
And Mayor, item T2, T2.
All right, Meg, you want to get started?
Yes, item 7S, one and two, I just always like to mention, but these are both resolutions authorizing the Office of Arts and Cultures to negotiate a contract with two different artists. Jonathan Hills is for the public art piece for Fire Station 23, and Laod Studio is the public art piece for Fire Station 21. I see Robbie Seer, it's just one more step in this great program of funding the 1% for art projects, and I know that, I had a little sneak preview of what we're talking about at the fire stations, and they're both very exciting opportunities. Item BB, probably a little bit more serious. This is the acceptance, or resolution authorizing acceptance of an award from the federal government for US Department of Justice for $270,000 for body cams. And I guess I just want to take the opportunity to implore both sides in this conversation that we're having to do their very best to reach a quick and fair compromise so that we can get the body cameras out on the streets. We're hearing it every day from citizens. We need to ensure that this happens, and we need to be able to put these dollars to work as quickly as possible, so I'm hopeful that we can work very hard toward that resolution. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Let's see, Pete, you want to talk about AD?
AD and AE, two and six are all directly or indirectly related to the project that the gentleman from City County Health commented on earlier at Southern Oaks Library and so forth. It's really a step, the AE, two and six are really coincidental to it because they were programmed a long time ago, but they're all coming in conjunction with moving forward with the health center, with a learning center, in cooperation with the schools. I continue to feel it may be the most outstanding project of cooperation of its kind I've seen anywhere. I think the new Parks Director would agree that we've never put together anything quite like this in terms of its synergy, and I want to thank again, we couldn't ask for a better partner than City County Health. They've been a great partner, so, just want to comment on it.
And David?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to mention, for those in ward five, we've got 24 different locations that we'll be repairing the streets and sidewalks on, and the total award for these repairs exceeds 1.1 million dollars. So, you know, that seems like a lot of money, but unfortunately, it doesn't go that far anymore, and I know there's other projects out there that we continue to address, and we will soon, but just wanted to mention that. And Mayor, I'm going to take some liberty since both Eric Winger, Director of Public Works, and Doug Cooper, Director of Oklahoma City Parks are here. I want to thank them, along with Cleveland County Commissioner Rod Cleveland, on paving of the Merle Medley Park Trail. They've concreted the trail, and Spike and I were out there Sunday afternoon, and we had a great time going around it. So, they did a great job, great cooperation between our city and Cleveland County, and it's a great facility. And I've already gotten a lot of compliments from, we have so many citizens living around that park that are over 60 years old, many of them have to get some type of assistance for walking or any kind of mobility activity, and this paving that trail really is going to help them to be able to utilize that park. Thank you.
Uh huh, thanks, David. Any other comments on the consent docket before we vote? All right, cast your votes, pass unanimously. Puts us on to the concurrence docket.
Most of the press back in subject to individual considerations.
All right, are there any individual considerations here? All right, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. It moves us on to item nine. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in ward five at 10740 South May Avenue. It's an ABC issue. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. It was approved by the Planning Commission, no objections. Francis, anybody signed up? Nobody signed up to speak. Are you the applicant?
Yeah, Dave Zimmer with Hal Smith Restaurant Group.
Yeah.
Requesting ABC overlay approval for a PubW concept.
Can you describe briefly what the new facility will be like?
We have two of these right now, one in Norman, one up on Memorial. It's a restaurant with a alcohol bar, pub food, comfort food. It's our third one.
Very good. Okay, well, thank you. I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Thank you. Item 9A2 is also an ABC issue. This is in ward eight at 2201 Northwest 150th Street. Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It's an ABC application. There were no protests, and the Planning Commission recommended approval. Rumor and habit, don't tell anybody, but I think we're getting the Teds in ward eight, and I'd move for its approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Sounds like you're going to get what you want. You can speak if you'd like, but at this point, just let us vote. All right. Pass unanimously. Thanks very much. All right, item 9A3 is an ABC issue in ward six. The address is 1203 Southwest 2nd Street.
Mayor, this is another location opening up in the Farmer's Market District.
This a restaurant?
All sorts of things going on. This is actually a, this is an ABC three, so this is a club license.
Oh, okay.
It is not the only one that Powerhouse has the same type license, and we're in a very concentrated, non-residential district, you know, much more industrial district.
Yeah, there's a lot going on in that area.
There is a lot going on around there, the new Delmar Markets, food truck area. I really, you know, think we're seeing an explosion over there that's just beginning, so. With that, I would move approval.
All right, any comments or questions on item 9A3? All right, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9A4 is a zoning case with an ABC issue in ward three. It's at 6320 Southwest 3rd Street. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present? If you'd like to come forward, this is in the Westgate Marketplace area, that's a rapidly growing area with additional restaurants. If you'd just like to give the council a brief overview of what we'll have out there?
It's a Peter Piper's Pizza. This is the same group that owns Chuck E. Cheese, so they're moving in a little more adult-oriented type of place. Not adult-oriented, but easier to take 35 children to and cope with. Other than that, it's just a restaurant, slightly better food than a Chuck E. Cheese, fewer games.
I think Chuck's going to be happy with the competition, but thank you anyway. It was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A4. Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9A5 is a zoning case in ward two at 812 Northwest 87th Street. It's currently R1 single-family, and it would become an I1 light industrial district if approved. Ed?
Did anybody sign up to speak? There's no protest. Passed the Planning Commission unanimously. I move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9A6 is a zoning case in ward seven. It's at 3100 Northeast 119th Street. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become an R1 single-family district if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up? No one has signed up. The Planning Commission did approve this, and this is for a future development of a single-family home. Again, the Planning Commission did approve. I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A6. Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9A7 is a zoning case in ward two at 2426 North Klassen Boulevard. It's currently a neighborhood business district, and this one would add a historical landmark overlay. And at 24th and Klassen, I have an idea what that historical landmark might be.
Yeah, it's the Milk Bottle Building.
Yeah, the Milk Bottle.
Has anybody signed up to speak? I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 9A8 is a zoning case in ward four at 12108 South Hiawassee Road. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would be turned into a new planned unit development. Pete?
Is there anyone signed up to speak in protest?
No.
I move approval.
Second.
All right, we're voting on item 9A8. Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9A9 is a zoning case in ward seven at 2300 Northeast 122nd Street. It's currently R1 and double-A agricultural, and it would be into a new PUD if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up? No one has signed up. I do see the applicant is present, and this applicant is Oklahoma Christian Academy, and the purpose of this zoning change is to allow the development of a school, campus, facility. So, Oklahoma Christian Academy would like to have their new campus in ward seven, again, at this particular location. I am actually a product of Oklahoma Christian Academy. I actually learned how to play the bass guitar at Oklahoma Christian Academy until they threw me out, but anyhow, but with that said, so, Oklahoma Christian, you got to be careful who you throw out to school because you never know where they might be when they get older. But anyway, I move for approval.
All right, item 9A9, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9A10 is a zoning case in ward two at 7228 North Klassen Boulevard. It's currently I2 moderate industrial, and it would be put into a new planned unit development. Ed?
Did anybody sign up to speak? No protest, unanimous at the Planning Commission, I move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A10. Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9A11 is a zoning case in ward seven at 15612 Northwestern. It's currently R1 single-family, and a new PUD would be created if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up? I see the applicant is present. I do want to take the time to thank the applicant. I do want to take the time to thank the applicant for holding a community meeting in reference to this particular development at first. It looked like there was going to be protests, but the applicant did work with the surrounding area and the surrounding neighborhood, is very pleased with this development. So, with that said, I move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we're voting on Item 9A11. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A12 is a zoning case in Ward 5 at 2624 Southwest 74th Street. It's currently R1, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development if passed. David?
Thank you, Mayor. This was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. There are no protests. Is there anyone here to speak against this? I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on 9A12. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A13 is a zoning case in Ward 6, 1300 Northwest 10th. It's currently R3 medium density, and it would become a new SPOD if approved. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission recommended this unanimously. There were a couple of TEs that the applicant has agreed to, which includes no additional curb cuts on 10th Street, which I think is important. As I said, there were no protests, so I would move approval.
Second.
All right, we're voting on Item 9A13. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A14 is a zoning case in Ward 3, 13040 Northwest 10th. It's currently C3, community commercial, and it would be put into a new SPOD. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up? There was a protest letter prior to the Planning Commission, but the protester did not show up at the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission approved it unanimously. I move for approval, subject to the TEs that are amended.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on Item 9A14 before we vote? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A15 is a zoning case in Ward 2. It's at 1419 Northwest 29th Street, and it's currently R1 single-family, and it would be put into a new simplified planned unit development. Ed?
Did anybody sign up to speak? I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on Item 9A15, and it passed unanimously. Item 9A16 is a zoning case in Ward 8 at 15040 North Penn. It's currently inside a planned unit development, and it would be put into a new SPOD if approved. Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance on final hearing for the approval of a new SPOD, SPOD 911. It is for a Chicken Express on North Pennsylvania. There were no protesters, no protest letters. The PC recommended approval, so I'd move for its approval.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A17 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 2113 South Mustang Road. It's currently AA agricultural, and it would be put into a new SPOD if approved. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up to speak? This was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission with no protest. I move for approval with the TEs as they're listed here.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on 9A17. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A18 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 1700 Northwest 17th Street. It's currently in a SPOD, and it would be put into a new SPOD if approved. Meg?
I see the applicants here. Steve, we talked about this project about six months ago or so, and I understand there've been some changes, and this is now to permit multifamily residential. Would you mind just explaining to the council, since we did look at this just very recently?
Steve Hurst, 3901 Red Deer Crossing in Edmond. We had bought this originally to convert it to apartments and some office use on the first floor, and we were approached by a ministry to convert it to a housing for disadvantaged youth, and their goal was to get financing from the state. And unfortunately, with the crisis that we're in at the state level, they were unable to get the funding that they needed. So, we had originally get it rezoned to allow for youth to be able to house there. So, now we're coming back to get it rezoned to allow multifamily in housing.
I certainly appreciate the explanation. I'm disappointed because it was a very worthy project, and I know you had put a lot of your heart into it.
Absolutely.
So, thank you for making the effort, but obviously, it's a neighborhood that can use lots of additional housing opportunities and choices for people. So, with that, I would move approval.
All right, we're voting on Item 9A18. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thank you, Steve. All right, Item 9B is a zoning issue in Ward 7. This is for a special permit to operate an automobile dealership inside of a PUD. John, you okay with this?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, anyone signed up? No one signed up. The Planning Commission did approve with TE, so I move for approval with the TEs.
Cast your votes on 9B1, and it passed unanimously. Item 9B2 is a request for a special permit to operate a high-impact institutional use, and this is in Ward 8 on Serentia Avenue. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a special permit that's recommended for approval for institutional use for a health, beauty, and wellness college. No protesters, no protest letters. The PC recommended approval, so I'd move for the approval of the special permit.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on Item 9B2. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. All right, Item 9C is in for final hearing today, and we are going to need the emergency on this, and Bob Teener can explain the need for the emergency. Bob, you want to explain this?
State law, excuse me, state law provides that if you pass this with the emergency, we, the clerk can publish the table of contents, so it's, instead of having to publish their entire ordinance, we can publish the table of contents and use it by reference. And so, we do this with the building code every time that we approve the building code.
So, we're making a change, but instead of having to publish the entire document, we're just publishing the changes that are necessary?
Right, we're publishing the table of contents of the Capitol Medical Zoning Ordinance, and then by reference, we can refer to that ordinance. And it'd be the same thing that we do when we adopt a change to the building code.
All right, any comments or questions from council?
Quick question, two motions or one?
Two motions. First one will be on the ordinance, 9C. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Cast your votes. The emergency passed unanimously. All right, Item 9D sets the dates of the council meeting for 2017?
I just want to point out that July 5th is a Wednesday. I don't know if that's, I mean, obviously, the 4th, we're not going to meet on the 4th, but...
That's correct. That's because of the holiday.
Okay, yeah.
And the charter reads that we will meet on the next business day.
Okay.
So, that's fine.
Yeah, I just wanted to, that's fine with me, but I just wanted to point it out.
Okay, now, thanks for pointing that out. All right, is there a motion? All right, cast your votes on 9D. Passed unanimously. Item 9E is a public hearing, and this would protect the tax-exempt status, is something the IRS is requiring. This item has been introduced. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on Item 9E today? All right, how about a motion then to move this forward? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9F is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9F?
Who's the item?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9G?
Who's the item?
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9H is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9H? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9I is a public hearing regarding removal of properties from the abandoned building list. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9J is a resolution that would deal with the issue of Manuel Perez Park and the naming opportunity that has been considered. This has already been through the River Trust and the Parks Commission, and looks like we have one person that has signed up to speak. Good morning, Donna. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Donna Cervantes, 319 Southwest 25th Street.
Yeah.
I'm just here to answer any questions. Thank you for your consideration. This has been put forward by the, a community group who wanted Manuel Perez Park to have more visibility. This was worked out with the Parks Commission in terms of finding a good location, making an agreeable arrangement to take this portion of Wiley Post Park that's underutilized. It'll be the new Manuel Perez Park, and we appreciate your consideration, and I think it's going to be a great thing for the community.
All right, Pete, I know you've been working on this.
Yes, I want to thank the Parks Commission, and especially Doug Cooper, for all the work you put into this. It turned out to be something that could have been very divisive, the idea of changing the name of a long-established city park. And it's actually worked out to be a better solution than we could have possibly thought of. There's such a large tract of, that is Wiley Post Park or an unnamed park on the east side of Robinson, that this gave everybody an opportunity to look at that, and it's going to bring some recognition to that. I think the people that, the proponents of this, to change this to Manuel Perez Park to honor a Medal of Honor winner from Oklahoma, have an idea that we will, there's a circle there, there's, built into it as part of the riverfront work, and they want to change that to honor all Medal of Honor winners born in the state of Oklahoma. It's just a great opportunity. It's just, I appreciate everything Doug did. I appreciate the Parks Commission. They couldn't have been more thoughtful in working out a solution for this, and I'm pleased by it.
All right, you'll make the motion.
I move its approval.
And I would second it. I would just say that little area where the circle is, Pete, that used to be called Compass Park, I think, was an area that we actually looked at once with the city manager for a permanent food truck park. It's a really fantastic location, right there on the bank of the river.
I think there's a lot of potential.
There's a tremendous amount of potential over there. It's just got that great skyline view back over the city, and it really has a lot of opportunity. So, very pleased to second this.
Thank you.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Donna. All right, Item 9K is a resolution that would call for city council elections on the other side of 2017. This is for Wards 1, 3, 4, and 7. Is there a motion?
No.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9L is a...
We need a motion on the proclamation.
Okay, Francis is pointing out on Item 9K2, we also need to make a motion on that proclamation.
No.
Okay, I see. All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. All right, now, we're on to 9L. We're settling a claim here, and I understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to approve would be in order?
Yes.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9M, I understand we do need executive session on this item?
Yes.
All right, a motion to move Item 9M into executive session?
Okay.
Okay, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9N, I understand we do need executive session on that matter as well?
Yes, we do on N.
Okay.
N.
M and N. All right, is there a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9O is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9O? All right, how about a motion?
Maybe I should...
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10A is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 10A? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 11 is items from council. James, you have anything for us? Ed?
A question about a story I read this morning. The COPTA Board's going to be hearing, I guess the Oklahoma City Public Schools Superintendent is proposing a program to allow children to ride the bus for free. I know Pete's been working on that for a bunch of years. David, do you, are you familiar with that, or is that...
Yes, I am familiar with the proposal. It's not for all children. The initial phase would be sophomores and juniors, I believe, or freshmen and sophomores, I can't remember. Two classes would be entitled...
Freshmen and sophomore.
Freshmen and sophomores to ride the bus for free. And then, the following year, expand that to not just freshmen and juniors, but freshmen through seniors. And I don't understand why they proposed that segment, but I do know that COPTA was concerned about just adopting this proposal without seeing how it kind of works out, and so to kind of phase it in to see, you know, what impact it may have on the embarked system.
Are there funds transferred? I mean, is somebody, are there, are there, is, we just make it free for freshmen and sophomores?
Well, here's one issue, Ed, that I do not know the answer to, whether or not there would be some kind of, some type of card issued to those students who meet those criteria, and the use of that card would allow that student to ride the bus. If there is that requirement, and who would be responsible for the cost of that card, I don't know the answer to. I think it's been an issue that's not being discussed at this time. I can't believe it's too much, you know, but...
Okay.
Those types of details, I think, still remain to be determined.
So, could that happen next semester in the...
I think the proposal is to begin in January of 2017, so yes, the next beginning, I don't know exactly from the Oklahoma City Public Schools semesters run, but yeah, beginning in January of 17.
Great, thank you.
All right, Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. As was mentioned earlier, they had the groundbreaking on Station 21, new fire station out in Woodson Park, and that was a great event yesterday. While out there, I had an opportunity to drive through a neighborhood called the River Park area, and that was an original weed and seed project from the Department of Justice, and the 2007 bond program has just concluded repaving all the streets in River Park and putting a sidewalk on one side of every street. And it was really great to see the revitalization that that did. And then, last week was the neighborhood night out, and a number of the neighborhoods had to change their plans due to possibly inclement weather. One of the neighborhoods that went ahead was the West 10 Group in conjunction with some neighborhoods in James's area, and had a big event down at the Melrose Center, which was a big hit. Over 250 people attended with free hot dogs for people. So, my congratulations to them, and I encourage the neighborhoods who had to reschedule to stay on top of it, the neighbors should, to see when the events are going to be replanned. Thank you, Your Honor.
Pete? All right, David?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share some of the comments that Oklahoma Treasurer Ken Miller presented last week in his monthly report. Receipts at the state level are down 10% for the month of September of 2016 compared to 2015. For the 12-month period, they're down 8.1%. So, while the news with respect to the oil and gas industry may seem to be bright with the recent increases in prices, I would caution everybody from taking too much, reading too much into that. The recent agreement by OPEC to begin limiting production had to occur, or we'd be looking at prices possibly below $40 a barrel. I think we need to remember oil and natural gas as a commodity. There's forces that push the price up and down within a certain range that nobody has control over. It's just the market speculation. We are still so heavily dependent upon the oil and gas industry, and yet, it's an industry,
just like we heard this morning with the opening of GE Oil and Gas Global Research Center. They're making advances in technology, just like all the other industries are, whether it's telecommunications, manufacturing, and as a result, you know, wells that used to take sometimes up to 90 days to drill or being drilled in, in less than 15 days. The number of people that need to be employed in the industry continues to contract. We're becoming much more efficient, much more effective in identifying where to drill, how to drill, and then once it's drilled, how to produce it, and then transport it. We keep making improvements in technology in the consumption of gasoline with automobiles and trucks especially. Everything is working against the industry as far as allowing prices to get back where they were a few years ago. So, for people to think, "Oh, we're seeing a little bit of improvement in prices," we're moving back into a favorable, favorable economic era in Oklahoma, I think are just making some wrong assumptions at this point in time. And I know Assistant City Manager Clowers is going to present later what the city's receipts are looking like. I just wanted to continue to put out that message, and it's even more of a reason, I believe, that the state needs to begin to accept the fact that the old ways of operating government are no longer valid. We've got to look at how can we fund basic operations at the state level, at the local level, which includes counties and cities, because some changes really do need to be made, or we won't be able to provide basic government services. Thank you.
Next?
Just briefly, Mayor. Seven of eight of the Ward 6 neighborhoods, despite the weather, held their events. The first, second place I stopped actually was Heritage Hills East, and there were two people and two dogs. Not too many, but lots of the neighborhoods had great, great turnout, and I really want to compliment the Reed Park neighborhood. They were the last on the stop. It was dark, it was lightning, and it was raining, and they were still there enjoying fellowship with their neighbors, so it was really nice. And I want to recognize the fire and police. They were at every single stop and very much appreciated. And I also wanted to mention, there was a great article in the paper today. I hope everybody saw the new program at the Oklahoma City National Memorial and Museum. Every ninth grader in the Oklahoma City Public Schools is gonna have the opportunity to visit the memorial. A new program. They've got a, a new sort of STEM lab or a, it's really a forensic lab. Well, they'll be able to work on tables and answer questions and make decisions. It's, it's a really impressive program funded by, you know, three of our best corporate citizens, OGN, AT&amp;T, and One Gas, who are providing not only the transportation, but also the ticketed admission for students to be able to attend, because obviously in this budget crisis, the school district doesn't have the dollars to make that available. So, all ninth graders...
In the state?
No, in the Oklahoma City Public Schools.
In the public schools. Okay.
OKC Public Schools. But every ninth grader, which is something like 3,500 kids, will have the opportunity to, you know, learn about the Oklahoma standard and, and what happened 21 years ago before they were all born. It's a wonderful opportunity.
All right. John?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to take the time out to thank Ward 7 for showing up to the Ward 7 Town Hall on Public Safety. We did have over 700 people who attended that particular town hall. I also want to thank St. John Baptist Church for hosting that town hall, and I also want to thank Chief City and also Deputy Chief Jester and Major Don Martin from the Spring Lake Division for being there and being able to give the presentation on the Police Department and being there to also answer questions. I also want to thank the FOP, John George and his officers for being there as well. FOP was present, and they was a part of the town hall, and I just want to personally thank FOP for opening up the dialogue about FOP and also the community. On last week, the FOP did meet with the NAACP and several other civil rights organizations to begin a ongoing dialogue on building a better relationship. So, again, thank you to the FOP, and thank you to the NAACP and other organizations for continuing the dialogue and trying to work together. And so, the, the issues of body cameras were discussed, and so, and I want to thank Meg for her remarks as it relates to, we, we hope both sides can come to an agreement soon, because we do need body cameras now. But again, thank those who did attend the Public Safety Town Hall. Also, I want to thank Assistant City Manager MT Berry for also being there, as well as my assistant Debbie Martin for being, for being there as well and helping with the town hall. And I also want to give special thanks to those neighborhood organizations who took part in the Neighborhood Night Out. We had almost 10, a little bit over 10 neighborhood associations who took part in it. I was only able to attend three because of the weather and also because it got darker sooner. And normally, I'm able to do about five, but I was only able to do three. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, John. Mark?
Neighborhood Night Out's one of my favorite events. It, it brings neighbors together where they can talk about security, they can talk about the neighborhood and improving it, and they can talk about just fun stuff. And I was able to attend two neighborhood association meetings, one at Remington and one at La Sanada. I want to thank Tim Munson from Remington and Kathy Walker for, from La Sanada for inviting me. Wish the weather, weather would've been a little better, but there were large turnouts at both of them. Lots of good food was being served, and people were just having fun. It was a wonderful evening.
All right. Thanks. All right. City manager reports. We have Emsa reporting your packet.
There is a report in your packet. There is no presentation that was prepared. Doug Dowler, the Budget Director, is available if there are questions about that.
Okay.
Councilman Greenwell did mention sales tax report. Our October check, again, was not good. It's 3%, 3% below last year, about $936,000 below target. The year-to-date general fund sales tax is down 4.1% below last year and 3.1 million below target. General fund use tax is 2.8% above last year, but that's still $467,000 below target. And the year-to-date general fund use tax is 6% above last year, but 2.1 million below target. Obviously, our sales tax continues to struggle. We've been below the prior year in 12 of the last 13 months. Staff continues to work on ways to identify additional budget reductions to balance our expenditures with expected revenues. Wish I had better news.
We understand.
I would, I would agree with David's comments. I would point out, David, that there, it's not, there are solutions coming out of the governor's office. Tomorrow's been proclaimed Oil Field Prayer Day in my ward, and Tower Hotel, those who are so inclined can congregate at Tower Hotel, and, and maybe that, maybe that will work.
And I did not mean to indicate that the oil and gas industry's not important. It's extremely important, but it's a source of revenue that's declining, and I don't think it'll ever generate the type of revenue in terms of taxes as it once did.
Yeah.
You know, it'll be profitable and everything.
Because what you're saying is, in the future, the price of oil is probably gonna stay reduced from where we saw it a few years ago, and partially because of the improvements in technology are just making the, the companies more efficient, and they can afford to make a profit at a lower, lower, lower price. So, there's good news buried inside of that.
Yeah.
But if the state is relying on gross revenues based on an outdated price for the commodity, then they're gonna be below expectations for a long time to come.
Correct. And there's other sources of revenues. You know, as an accountant, we see a variety of different ways to generate tax revenue, whether it's sales tax on services or financial transaction taxes. There's a variety of ways. I'm just saying, we've got to revisit that with a new set of eyes, with data that's more current than when we created this tax structure back in the 1930s.
All right. We're up to citizens to be heard. We have some people that have signed up to speak, anxious to hear from you. I would ask, because we have a large number, I would ask people to keep their comments to three minutes or less. Our first person is Samuel Terry.
Good morning, Mayor, and council members. I don't know what the protocol is for, my name is Samuel Terry, and my address is 11300 North League.
Thank you.
I don't know what the protocols are for...
Just, yeah, do whatever you want.
...
Sure.
Pictures, and I also have aerial video of my property. Several years ago, the city came in and dug a drainage ditch on the south side of my property. When they dug it, they didn't do anything. They didn't concrete it or anything. So, a few years ago, I was here before the, I was here then to present the situation that the city is, is growing weeds right there in that drainage ditch. So, I sought and received relief the last time, and I've been out of state taking care of my sick mother, and I got, I had someone mowing my lawn, and I got a notice about this, so I returned here just so I can make sure I take care of that. I've called and been in contact with the code enforcement officer by the name of Buffington. I've also left messages with the superintendent, and as of, as of last Tuesday, I left a message with my council, councilman. And like usual, I'm not getting any return calls.
You're the property owner?
Yes, sir.
The city dug some sort of flood relief drainage ditch? I'm looking at the pictures here.
That's what it's called. There's a, there's a picture there that shows a, a concrete whatever.
Right.
Well, going east and west, there's a ditch right there. You can't really tell it's a ditch because of the grass there, but there's actually a ditch. And the last time they, you know, they gave me the relief, and they came out and they redug it again to get rid of the weeds and stuff. And knowing, and I've called the action line, knowing what the budget situation is with the city, I haven't really pursued it as far as them coming back in and taking, and cleaning that out again.
Let, let me find that on. Charles, can you shed any light on this? Whose responsibility is it for the, for mowing and the debris that seems to be collecting in this ditch?
Well, it'd be his responsibility to maintain if it's on his property. From my understanding, unless they have a maintenance agreement, when they put the ditch down, the city would not go back in and clean this out.
All right. Well...
But I'm not familiar with it. I'll have to look.
So, why don't you step out and talk to Charles about it? And so, and we got the pictures here, which I, I really appreciate.
And I have a video as well, aerial video, which kind of shows it better.
Well, the pictures, you know, show the situation. I just don't know whose responsibility it is, but we want to get it figured out.
Okay.
And I really appreciate the time you sit down and the patience that you've exhibited this morning and, and waiting for us.
Well, the main thing is, is that I sought and received relief the last time, and it's the same problem. Why would I receive a bill?
Yeah. Hopefully, we'll get that resolved for you this morning.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down. Samuel Terry has helped us. I say Jerry Foshee? Welcome back, Councilman.
Thank you. Thank you. My name's Jerry Foshee, 2141 Crossgate Road. I'm an attorney in the Oklahoma City area. I was asked to address the council on concerns involving their health insurance and increase in their health insurance starting in 2017. And in particularly, it is involving the 426 police officers who are under the age of 65 concerning the health insurance and the, and increase in those prices. I'm gonna throw some numbers at you, then I'll specifically go into what, what the problem is. In 2016, on the HMO, for the firefighter under the age of 65, it was $495.39. In 2017, that's going up to $569.61. For retired firefighter under the age of 65 and his spouse that's on the HMO plan, it's going from $1,114.62 to $1,281.78. In 2000, in the indemnity plan in the 2016, retired under 65, it was $435.74. In 2017, for just the retired officer, it's going from $676.84. For the retired officer and his spouse under the indemnity plan, it's going from $868.51, that's what it was in 2016, to $1,305.72. For the retired police officer under 65, for the family plan, which includes the family, in 2016, it was $1,139. In 2017, it's gonna be $1,789, which is basically a $600 increase per month. Now, I've thrown some figures at you, and I'll give you some how it's really affecting these police officers. You've got to keep in mind, the police officers that work for 25 to 30 years, most of them work two jobs just to work for their families. Now they're retired. This is from a police officer who worked almost 30 years. In 2007, his retirement income, take-home, was $1,963. That was his retirement income. In 2016, his retirement income was $1,404. In the 2017, based on the proposals that, that they just found out about, his retirement income after he, after they take out for the insurance is $800 a month. It's almost a 60% increase in what he was paying. These officers, first of all, they weren't given any notice of this substantial increase in the health insurance. When you're on a retired income, folks, you've got to start planning ahead. These officers now are facing the difference between only bringing home $800 out of their retirement. Now, some of them are having to go to work just to pay their insurance. Now, you know, I was on the council during the Murray bombing. I was on the council with the two largest tornadoes in the history of the United States, and we had what was called the community standard for police officers. It was a national standard. It was talked about on the news. To place these officers where they're hit so, with so much hardship by increasing this, their health insurance by this much is, is a devastation to some of these officers. Now, what we're asking is, is that, you know, go back to the 10-city survey, see what other cities are doing for the retired police officers who are under the age of 65. I've also talked to Mr. George, and he can, I think he's here today, and he may talk, is that, you know, there's a possibility, maybe we can blend it, where you blend the retirees with the active-duty police officer to help people on a fixed income deal with the increase. And the other problem the retirees are facing, they haven't received a cost of living increase from our legislature in nine years. In nine years, no cost of living increase. So, they're, they're definitely, each time they get there, everybody knows how things are going up. I don't need to teach economics to you, but they're, they're actually making less and less because the cost of living continues to go up. I'm asking you that, you know, these police officers, in Oklahoma City, we've always taken care of our own, and our police officers has always taken care of Oklahoma City. I would like you guys to re-get involved in this, see if there's other solutions. As a city, we're known for working outside the box. We're known for looking at all avenues, whether it's going to the 10-city survey and see how they're doing it, how they're protecting the retirees, or there has to be a possible way that we can address this where the police officers and the retirees are not so adversely affected.
Jerry, we're, we're looking at all the things you've suggested, so...
Well...
Yeah. So, we're, we're working on it.
I'm, I'm glad you're working on it, but the other problem is, no notice was ever sent until recently about this increase. And when you're a retiree, you need to have some notice that the rates are gonna go up.
But it hadn't started yet.
Okay. No, it starts in 2017.
Right. So, I mean, there's notice. I mean, that's, we let you know as soon as we knew. So, if it started today, I'd say, yeah, there's no notice, but it, it doesn't start today. We've still got some time to work on.
No, but then, when you're a retiree, you need plenty of notice.
Have you looked at, have you looked at other cities and seen out-of-the-box solutions that you like?
I think Mr. George can talk about some of those things, but there, the other cities, first of all, for our legislature not to give a cost of living increase for nine years for these retirees is kind of unusual. But there are things that you can do, for example, blending the retirees with the present police officers to kind of spread the cost out, which could also work.
It's a smaller pool, and they've had an extraordinarily number of claims, and that's why the jump has occurred.
A couple of really expensive claims.
A handful, yeah. And so, we're trying to figure out if we can... And so, we're trying to figure out if we can put them into a larger pool that might lessen the impact, but it's, it's not for a lack of attention, I can assure you of that, but right now, we don't, we don't know how this is gonna turn out.
Well, Mira, and I just think it's really important for those, you know, watching, th- these are not insurance rates that we set. This was an increase that we received from our insurance carrier because of the facts that we just heard. It's a small pool with a couple of catastrophic illnesses, so we unfortunately.
I think, I think the mayor's correct, because you have a smaller pool under the age of 65 out of all the retired police officers. But that, you still have 426 police officers who are under age of 65, and it is adversely affecting them. So, I, if we increase the size of the pool by possibly blending it with, with the active officers, then the cost could be spread out with a larger pool, which would increase, decrease the amount of, uh, hardship on the smaller pool.
Yeah.
But I appreciate you listening to me, and I appreciate, uh, me, uh, normally, an attorney gets in front of you, and he talks forever, so that's about all I have to say. But man, we need to support these police officers, guys. They are still the backbone of our city, and I've supported them for over 40 years. I know many of you have too, so I appreciate listening to me. Thank you.
No argument here, Jerry. Thank you for helping them out.
Jerry, before you leave, uh, and I think the whole council supports what you're saying. As we've just talked about, we're under some very tight budget constraints ourselves. But if you, especially the groups that you are affiliated with and represent, could share our concern with the state legislature, that it's time to look at other sources of revenue to fund government services, both at the state and local levels, maybe if we begin to encourage them more to look at that, we'll get some movement going. Cause just as the numbers we presented, they're down 10% in revenues, we're down 4% to 5% in revenues, and it's not going to change anytime soon.
Well, no, it's not, but, uh, police officers are, are still here, and, uh, and I wanna make it clear, I don't get paid for coming here. I remember when I was on the council, we got, Pete, remember this, we got $20 a week for showing up, so I'm just doing this because of my support for the police.
Why don't we have any former police officer that's in the, in the room today? Why don't you stand so we could acknowledge that you're here? We really. Thank you. Jerry, thank you. Teresa Sterling has signed up to speak.
My name is Teresa Sterling. I live at 281 West Tecumseh Road, and, um, I spent most of my career, 26 years of my career, in child abuse, um, investigating child abuse, child rapes, child homicides, adult homicides, and sex offender registration. And I'm sorry, I can't believe I'm gonna do this. I know policemen aren't supposed to cry, but this is hard for us. I was forced to retire from the city, Oklahoma City, in 2013, because I was injured on the job and had two neck surgeries and three back surgeries. When my husband and I hired on, the police department, we took a $6 an hour pay cut to become policemen because we wanted to be policemen. And we were told, you're gonna have a retirement, and you're gonna have free insurance. Well, clearly, that was a lie, because we're going to be paying more in insurance than we're gonna be bringing home to pay our bills. And yes, I just heard somebody say, well, you've got your notice. It happens in 2017. Well, this is 2016, and it's the end of the year. So, thanks for that great, um, notice. I was really horrified when I learned about 56% increase in our insurance benefits, because we already pay almost $1,200 a month. When I attended the retired police officers meeting the other day, a man from, from the government, who was there to help, to explain why our 56% increase was going up, he said, "My generation of police officer has more claims, more health issues, and more cancer than anyone else." Well, let me explain to you why. Policemen have to carry around 25 to 35%, or 35 pounds of extra gear on their bodies. They have to get in and out of cars 100 times a day, and at a moment's notice, with cold muscles, no stretching, jump out of that car, chase down a bad guy, tackle him, scrap with him, wrestle him, and arrest him. Upmost times, those, those people are bigger, stronger, and younger than we are. We drive cars 10 hours a day, and with driving cars 10 hours a day, you're gonna have a wreck, okay? Do you know what happens to an officer when they have a wreck and it's their fault? They get a reprimand for something that's gonna happen, because they're in a car 10 hours a day. My generation of police officers were sent into meth labs without proper equipment, to drug houses without the proper equipment to keep us from breathing in toxic chemicals. My generation of police officers are the same generation of police officers who went into the Murrah building. And I'm sorry, this is really hard for me to talk about. Because 20 years later, that's really fresh to me. We ran into that building without, we were the first ones there. We ran into that building without thinking of our safety, and without any equipment at all to protect us. And we ran in there to save lives, because that's what a sheepdog does. That's what a warrior does. And that's what my friends and I did that day, and for many weeks after. The fire department, when they got there, they are trained to stand outside and wait for the gas and the electric to go off. They have proper gear. We did not. They got to, they didn't go in until actually the second bomb that was cleared. That day, we carried out dead children, dead adults, and luckily, live children and live After the 9/11 in New York City, the, New York City actually recognized that some of those health concerns and some of the health issues that people had were from that incident that occurred on 9/11. Those people were dying of cancer, they had severe health issues, and they actually got together and supported their public servants, their sheepdogs, and passed a bill to, to address their health concerns. We've done none of that. But my generation of police officer, instead of honoring and caring for my generation of police officer, you, the city council, have decided to punish us with a punitive 56% raise in our insurance. It's punitive. This punitive raise in our insurance is gonna create a new problem for you. It's gonna create a generation of police officers who won't retire until they're 65. Do you really want 65, 70-year-old policemen running around protecting the city, when you could hire young, you know, tough guys to come actually do the job? I, that's what I would want. The Thunder brings you in a lot of money and a lot of revenue. I understand you have ma, money issues. I get it. But we've given a lot to you. We gave up birthdays, we gave up holidays, we gave up lot, time with our children and our families. The, the hundreds of hours, my friend Willie and I worked on child abuse cases, because you didn't have the money to pay us overtime, so that we could put child predators, child murderers, and child abusers in, in prison. We worked our own time doing that, because we love this city, and because we love the citizens of Oklahoma City. So, instead, I'm sorry, because you have revenue from other places, I, I, you have maps 1 through 1,000, I don't know how many there's gonna be, but there's a lot of them. And surely, there's some money from that. There's money from somewhere that surely you can find to support or help make up the cost of this insurance.
Teresa, thank you. We appreciate you coming down.
I, can I just say one more thing, please?
Okay.
Instead, um, a 56% cents raise in our insurance is a thanks you give to my generation of police officer. It's shameful. It is shameful. And the difference between a sheepdog and what I am seeing here today is, and perception is reality here, folks, and optics are everything, is a sheepdog will do everything they can to protect a human life. And what I see here today shows me that what you're concerned with is your next map project and the next hotel you wanna build.
Dale Campbell?
I address is 11500 Southeast 89th, Ward 4 District. I know Mr. White also. Uh, I retired in 1999. Uh, had 25 years with the Oklahoma City Police Department, Patrol Division. Uh, my insurance was $199 a month for me and my wife, for the HMO. It kept going up year after year, and I had to take a security job, so we could basically make it. Uh, now, if I would've stayed on the HMO, it'd have been $1,281.78. I had to drop about five years ago or so to the group indemnity, which was about $450, because it basically was gonna take all my retirement. And it would now, it'd only have like $150 left to survive on. Now, uh, I'm in it, it went up $300 this year. So, it's 82672. The dental doubled, uh, 21 to 42. And I've, it's, it's just, it's getting out of hand, you know, totally, because I was just, I didn't go up in the ranks. I was, you know, not everybody can be a major and a captain and all this and make big, big money. So, I'm just, I don't wanna sit here and talk your leg off, but, you know, I only got three, three, uh, minutes, but there's a lot of officers just like me that aren't gonna be able to survive, basically. I quit my security job to take care of my parents. One has already died in July, and the other one, I don't know, but I'm, I'm gonna have to find another job. I talked to a guy out here about their, their hiring, because to survive. And, uh, I hope the officers that are on now know what they're, what they're buried theirself into, because they're gonna see some officers out there, 60, 70 years old, and maybe 80, but they won't retire. Well, after they get 65, they, you know, it'll be better after that, but I have another, about a year and a half for that. But anyway, I'll let you go on that, but, but that's, uh, that's where it's at.
All right. Thanks, Dale. You deserve better.
If it keeps going up, please don't let it go up anymore, or if you can, find some money to give us some help, okay? Thank you.
Okay. Curtis Timmons?
Yeah, it's still morning in. Yep. Randy Scott. I live at 1504 Old Mill Road in Moore. I'm, uh, retired with 35 years at this police department. Uh, I've been retired now for three years. Several members of this council know me well. I was here about a month and a half ago to present accreditation award for this police department, which is a dynamic award for this agency and for this city, uh, which you acknowledge. I wanted to kinda bring to your attention a little bit about this, which I'm sure it's already well-informed your attention. We'll speak at some point, if you'd like privately. I think that some solutions for this are still out that can be handled. There's a lot of prescription medication, which is issued. You've got a care center over here that the officers can use as they're coming in, but that's new. Not everybody, not every retired officer, cause that, that information doesn't get published to them the way it really gets published to the, to the officers that are here. You've got officers that's sitting here that travel, just like me. I'm going across this country speaking for this agency, actually, cause I present awards at city council meetings all across this nation. So, when I'm there, they wanna know where I'm from. They read my bio. There was no need for you to read my bio when I came here, cause people know me. But they read my bio there. I get stopped before I can ever leave those council meetings, I know about Oklahoma City, about the Murrah bombing, which I worked, which I worked, I was part of the prosecution team on Terry Nichols later, so 15 years, 14 years in homicide, and then another 10 is accreditation. I spent a little time with this agency. The, they'll ask me questions about the bombing, they ask me questions about this city. I promote this city, I promote this agency, all across this country still today. This, this will impact me at about $500 a month more from, for another year. I, I think I can handle this impact personally, but I know a lot of people in this room that cannot handle its impact. I bleed for them, and I would ask you to look at some of the prescription information to see if you can't set with this agency across that you contracted with, to help with the prescriptions, just to get prescriptions and better Medicare for them just to go down. Uh, I think that some solutions there may help with that, with the economy that you're dealing with, but it also may help with these, these officers, cause they're, they're gonna struggle. There's a lot of them gonna really struggle, and I think the age limit that you're gonna find them retiring is gonna get higher. That's gonna cause more health issues for all of them, so, thank you.
Right. Thanks, Ray.
One's a good solu, the Care ATC clinic that we have downtown, if retirees come and use that, there's no copay, correct?
Until you're Medicare age. There's no copay, from my understanding. There's no copay from it, and also, you can get some prescriptions, but it doesn't have every prescription. And I'll tell you, right now, I've been down there, and the prescriptions my wife has to take may have about two of them. Now, mine, I take her Zerelto from blood clots from agency, from flying across the country and stuff, but that Zerelto can't be filled by them across the street. But there's some medications, if, some of the, some of the generics, if you present that to them, they should be able to get that. That's the contract you have with those people over there, not with, not.
But if, if you go there.
You can get prescriptions free. That will save cost of prescriptions if they carry the generic brand, but your doctors are the ones that's gonna prescribe certain things.
And if you go to that clinic five or six times a year, you're gonna save that, those copays.
You can save a copay, but it's only for minor emergency, if I have flu, I can go in there and get a cold check. It's not for a primary physician at all. It's just for my understanding for medical care necessary.
No, I don't think that's correct. And I, and I think that's.
See, that's what we're, we're not being told that.
Well, I think we need to clarify that.
Yes.
Can you speak to that?
Colin Fong, the Employee Benefits Manager. The clinic, the Care ATC operates, the city's clinic across the street here. It is a primary care clinic, and it, any urgent care to chronic condition maintenance is being delivered through the physician at the clinic, and we do stock over there, um, common generic drugs. It's not a pharmacy, so it will not have everything. It does not have brand drugs, it does not have narcotics, but it does have a lot of very common generic drugs that can be dispensed 30, 90 days into the member's hand at that point in time. It is no cost.
So, if somebody has diabetes or hypertension, or, those can all be managed there?
Those are managed there.
You can go there and not pay any copay throughout the year?
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
Those are some of the solutions I think you can, can get to, but just like, I wouldn't wanna quit my primary care doctor that I've gone to forever. If, other than just, he's gonna prescribe my medication, my, my Zerelto and my blood pressure medicine, but if I can go down here as long as he's prescribed it and I can receive it there, I'll go there to get it.
Right, I mean, we have to compromise.
To have a checkup on it.
We have to compromise.
I don't need to go to the doctor for a checkup, but if I need to go in.
Right.
To see my physician that's dealt with me for years and knows my medical history, I would prefer to go see my medical doctor. And I don't mind paying the insurance to go see him and use this as a substitute.
Right.
Whatsoever, but I don't think it's getting out to, to everybody that they can use.
But when we're looking for solutions, if we can provide a good primary care physician, and you can go for just standard maintenance, say.
Exactly.
And avoid all those copays, that's, that's a compromise where we can all work together and save some money.
But it's gonna take you all to help get that out to people, cause they're not gonna get it. And, and the drugs, like I said, you can't get everything from them that you can get.
But whatever we can do.
Even the generics, cause I've been in and asked, and some of those, they wouldn't take.
Okay.
And I think you can work with that. I think we've talked to Colin about this, that maybe that can be worked out, but I think it takes you all to have to work that out.
But we're talking about 420 people, so we should be able to get the word to all 420 people.
I would hope so.
Okay.
And he tried to do some of that the other night, but I still think it needs. it needs to be pushed out so people can understand that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Teresa Shoup.
Mayor Cornet and Council, I am here this morning.
Teresa, I need your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Teresa Shoup, 12721, Southeast 149. The Council and Mayor Cornet, I'm here this morning to speak on behalf of my husband, David Shoup, Retired Oklahoma City Police Department Deputy Chief and recently retired Oklahoma City 911 Director. He's in Tulsa today in previously scheduled meetings with law enforcement executives about the Emergency Responder Assistant Program that is a nonprofit to assist first responders struggling with critical incidents. These are his words. I have dedicated my life to public service, starting my career with the city at the age of 18 and recently retiring in July after 43 years of service. When hired, I believed I would have no cost healthcare during my tenure with the city and during my retirement. That has changed and I understand why. I do believe employees and retirees should pay a portion of their healthcare. However, I am shocked at a 56% increase in premiums in one year. What would your reaction be if the state of Oklahoma raised sales tax by 56% in one year or the federal government increased your taxes by that same amount? I know what it would be. You would be engaged in attempt to prevent it from occurring. I have often said and firmly believed Oklahoma City is a great city. It is great because I believe we have good government, good citizens, and good employees. I know many of you personally and I've heard you say over and over again that our city has great employees. I know you are sincere in those beliefs. When one considers our city's greatest assets, they are not buildings, cars, rivers, streets, or bridges. Our city's greatest asset is people. It is you, our citizens, and yes, our employees and retired employees. You already know that. Leadership is about making difficult decisions. There are none more difficult than moral and ethical dilemmas. When presenting ethical dilemma training to countless professional groups, I tell them sometimes there is more than one right answer and sometimes there is no right answer. So as leaders, what we do when faced with these circumstances, what do we do? We should seek justice. I see this as one of those circumstances. My plea for you is to seek the just answer. What is the just thing for you to do in this circumstance? In closing, I want to say that leadership, if done correctly, is excruciatingly difficult. It is painful if you care about those you lead. That is why it isn't for everyone. I want to thank each of you for your leadership and your commitment to our city. I simply leave you with two closing comments. First, focus on people and our city will continue to thrive and your personal success will thrive. And second, true character is exposed during the most difficult of times, not when things are going well. Please find a just alternative to the current healthcare plan for city retirees. A 50% increase in healthcare premiums is not just. With much appreciation and respect, David Shoup.
Thank you, Teresa. Richard Boyd.
Thank you, Mayor Cornet, as Honorable Counsel. You know, several years ago, 1987, I ran for mayor of Oklahoma City. Ran against Ron North and Pete White. They both beat me. The only one I beat was Opioturier. He became a close friend of mine and he went on to be a representative in the state legislature. It's quite an experience. You know, we've been beating ourselves up each other for quite a few years over health insurance. I've negotiated contracts all across the United States over the years in the hundreds. And it's always an item which neither one of us can do anything about. We beat each other up and the insurance companies get paid. And it's time for us to try maybe just a little different avenue. And I've had suggested over the years that we go to some kind of a commission within the city of Oklahoma City. Some other jurisdictions have it, Health and Welfare Commission, that is made up not only of city employees, both union or non-union workers and supervisors, but also retired officers, retired city members, so that they can also buy in to a healthcare plan, that they can participate in it with the building of the new wellness centers by the city in north and south, get people interested in their own healthcare and reduce costs. That's the way that it has to be done. We all know that. So, and albeit it, they won't do anything about the current situation, I think that you need to be sensitive for what such a large increase is doing to these, not only police officers, but I would assume every city employee that's under 65. Is that correct?
Well.
Is it, are they all paying the same percentage?
This is affecting the group that are retirees under age 65 that are on our Group Indemnity Plan, which is the plan that's administered by Blue Cross Blue Shield of Oklahoma. There's 380 folks on that plan. We also offer a Medicare Advantage Plan, I'm sorry, a Medicare HMO style, not Medicare, but an HMO plan for retirees under age 65. And that has 181 or so people on that one. So we do offer two plans and we also have an alternate medical plan for folks that are under 65 that they could enroll in. So we have three medical plans that retirees could choose from in this group. And yes, they do all, the rates for the two Blue Cross plans went up 56% and the other plan went up 16.
That probably makes my argument that everybody being able to buy into a system that they can participate in. And if we could do that through an independent commission that makes recommendations to the council about everybody's well-being and that we feel that we're a part of it, then I don't think that we'd be beating each other up over the issue. So as a suggestion, I'd like to visit with somebody in staff or whatever about it and see if that kind of participation can happen in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Mark Nelson.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning, Mark.
Thank you very much for giving us a few minutes to speak. I'm here on behalf of the over 600 retired Oklahoma City FOP members and in conjunction with the ones that are also here. I'm sure you can hear the anger at some, in some voices, the hurt and the pain that is being caused by the proposed increase. I think in describing this increase, it wouldn't be an understatement to, to say that the effects are devastating. We're not here to point fingers. We're here to ask for help. And at a time when this has been an ongoing problem and it's, it's kind of reached a head, and I think within the last two to three weeks is when, give or take a day or two, is when our retirees were notified and when the phones started ringing off the hook down at the FOP. So many folks are affected by this. The many folks that are affected by this are the same individuals that, as you've heard, the ones who missed holidays. They missed birthdays. They missed family functions. And I'm sure you'll hear from a couple who, who even been victim of death in the line of duty as far as a family member is concerned. So certainly not your average person. We like to think of our folks who serve in, in law and order and in public safety as, not better, just different. And these, these cost increases are, are, again, devastating. After 30 years of service, multiple decades of service to the city and its citizens, they're greeted with a retirement, which is just a small reprieve from looking and dealing with the worst parts of humanity every single day. I don't think it's unrealistic that they be able to enjoy their retirement. And here we are to this point of them at the crossroads of what do I do now, now that I'm in retirement and faced with this financial catastrophe. So if you don't know, experts in the field, Dr. John Vialanti in the University of Buffalo says that a police officer will spend his life or his life expectancy is about 10 years less than the average male. So I would offer that these folks have more than earned the privilege of enjoying their retirement without being constantly concerned about the skyrocketing cost of health insurance. And I'll repeat, and, and we're well aware that this is not the city's fault or the city's problem and they're passing it on to its, its retirees. Health insurance is a national problem. But firmly believe, and I say this with no ill intent or, or being disingenuous at all, that this is a matter of priorities. And, and, and if the council can find a way to fund an $80 million hotel that our retirees on the priority list at least, at least are at that level. And so what I'm asking for is that let's, let's, we'll work together. Let's find something instead of continually talking about it. And I don't think anybody's been wasting any time, but we, the FOP and the thousand plus officers that are active, has been much discussion about the willingness on our, of our own members to help with our retirees. So entering into discussion that the city would be willing to help with, in conjunction with FOP, we, we would be more than glad to have that discussion. This problem is, it's life-changing and it's earth-shattering. I don't know how else to describe it. Not everybody makes what some, some folks make. In the public safety field, they do not. And so this, returning to work and having an aged workforce, I'm, I'm sure you all are aware of the consequences of this and I don't think you're ignoring it. We just urge you to maybe move it up on the priority list of being able to address it. So thank you for your time. Thank you much for your consideration and we look forward to trying to find a solution to this.
Can I ask you a question, Mark?
Yes, sir.
I definitely agree with all your comments, including the hotel priorities, but I want to just ask you, I mean, FIRE has a little different system. FIRE, I think, saw this coming. The active duty, I think, make contributions, which goes into a pool to try and offset some of the costs for retirees because they, they saw this coming. I mean, what, just looking at their system or other cities even, what, what do you think of, and maybe that's not sustainable for FIRE, but that's, that is a difference. What do you think of that potential approach?
Well, I don't, we're actually in the process of trying to get into communication with FIRE. Tulsa FOP has their own trust. They don't, the city contributes an amount similar to what happens here in Oklahoma City to the FOP or the way the city contributes to FIRE. And then FIRE here manages their own trust. FOP in Tulsa manages their own trust. So we're looking at avenues of that being a possibility. I think to the point where we've actually, there's been some discussion of that in negotiations this year of us moving out, not this year, but in the future to try to help manage or at the very least control some of these costs. So we're looking at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Danner.
Morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for your time. My name is Mark Danner. I live at 8344 Rock Cliff Way in Piedmont, Oklahoma, just outside of Oklahoma City. I retired in 2009 at the pay rank of sergeant. Most of my career was spent in Special Projects Narcotics Unit. And in 1989, I went to a school to learn about the dangers of methamphetamine labs. Now, 27 years later, we all know what those dangers are. But back then, it was something that happened out in California or other places and we didn't know a lot about it. So we went there to learn about it. Even, and even though I went there with a, I think, a major and a chemist from the city as well, the city did not, and the department did not step up in that endeavor. And so in 1994, my division, Special Projects Narcotics Unit, was charged with dismantling the methamphetamine labs that we started having. And you're looking at the protective equipment that I wore in those methamphetamine labs. Shirt, blue jeans, and tennis shoes. No gloves, certainly no serenex suits, certainly no breathing apparatuses, nothing. And we had to, we had to literally fight the department with a potential OSHA complaint to get that equipment. And it didn't come for months. And we worked sometimes at that point in 1984, based on my memory, I would say probably two, three labs a month, which doesn't seem very significant until you're the one in there inhaling those fumes and breathing all that stuff. But I didn't blink. My cohorts didn't blink. And I'm asking that the council not blink on this issue because we stepped up and we did what we had to do, even though I think some people probably suffered some ill effects from that. Unfortunately, I don't, I haven't noticed any yet. But my insurance is going to go up to $1,305, about a $450 increase. And I've got two weeks to figure out what the best solution is going to be for me. But that's even, that's only part of the problem. I mean, that's only part of the issue. What are we paying and getting for this money? You know, I recently read or heard that the Insurance Commissioner for the state of Oklahoma find Blue Cross Blue Shield, our carrier, $3 million for wrongdoing on their part. I don't know all the ins and outs in that, but that says something to that, about that organization to me. In addition, Express Scripps, our pharmacy benefit manager, is got to be, there's got to be somebody better out there. They are, they are at the bottom of the run. And the reason I say that is because used to, our doctors were in control of what medications we take, we took. We've now taken that from the doctor and we've given it to the insurance companies and let them figure it out. And so what happens if you need, say, a medication A? They will look at all the different medications and they've got it down to a fine art. If there's something cheaper that might work, then you have to take that medication. You don't have a choice. You have to take it. And if that one doesn't work, you still don't get the right one. You have to take a second one to see if it will work. And this came to glaring light to me when I tried to get preventive for my wife who has asthma and it's an inhaler. She uses about one a year. And the cost for that inhaler is $70. But I had, we had to buy this other one that cost Express Scripps $22 and for which was a name brand. So they sold it to us for $30 twice before we could get the preventive because I won on the appeal of the denial of the appeal of the denial of the quality drug that she needed. The other ones don't work. And I just think we need to take back healthcare and give it back to the doctors. You know, if, if a cheaper medication will work, I take generic medication all the time. I have several that I take. And if they work, that's great. But if they don't work, there ought to be a better way for us to get what will work for us. I thank you for your time and appreciate it.
Thanks, Mark. Jay Barnett. Okay. George Fina.
I thought for a minute you guys forgot there was firefighters here. George Fina, 5120, Fina Drive in Piedmont, Oklahoma. And the reason it's Fina Drive is because I was mayor and council for 21 years and they said, if you don't run again, we will name the street after you. So I appreciate the open door for all of you because you've all been there to listen. I appreciate the open door for all of you because you've all been there to listen to me. And you too, Mayor, I appreciate that. And you know, the first thing, when I talk to you is, "Good morning, Council. We got an insurance problem. This thing is, has gotten really out of hand. And Council Greenwall, you asked for us, you wanted to know if we did anything out at the state two years ago when you changed that deal. You asked me to go out there and ice plant pension collateral to visit with state representatives and senators to make sure we got that passed. If you all remember or you didn't know, when it was in the hearing, the Senate that was leading it says, "This is not leaving the room until Mr. Fina is happy with it." So, we really worked hard. The other thing is, there are a lot of people that are on this insurance. The guys that made sure people get water. And the policemen are out there doing what they do, firefighters are there. And I could go into a lot of things that I did on the job, but I signed up to do that job. One of the reasons I signed up was that, and Councilman Greenwall, Councilman White knew my dad real well. And we were standing in the shoe shop where he was out in Capitol Hill, and I said, "Dad, I'm going on the fire department." He said, "Well, that's good." I said, "How much you gonna make?" I said, "Well, I can keep working here and I can be on the fire department, and I'll make the same money." And my dad looked at me. He said, "Don't sound very smart, son." But the reason I did, I said, "Dad, I'll have a pension and I'll have insurance." And that's what you promised me. And you didn't hear, we're even, this thing isn't even over. We were with Colin the other day, and he said, "In case things don't go right with the unions, this could go up." Now, $469, that's a lot of money. That's a car payment. That's somebody's college fund. You're taking that away from those people. And some of these people, you know, fire and police, their pensions weren't all that bad. But take that guy that's been digging ditches out there for you. His pension's only about $1,800 a month, and you're taking most of it. My pension's only worth 25% of what it was when I retired in 1984, '05. We also, people over 80, over 65, we went to Plan D a couple of years ago. And it's already saved the city over $1 million, and it's still saving all the time. That should have come back. It should have come back. We, three years ago, our pension, over 65 people, and I've got a lot of them. And when we talk about FIRE, we were left out. We're not part of that. We're on our own out there. But, you know, that, that, they went up $100 a month. I came and talked to you then, and it came down $50-some dollars the next year. And now it went up $67. So, we lost all of that. When they, what everybody says, well, this is what the insurance says to me. You know, when you're dealing with somebody and they raise things so high, what are you gonna do? You just say, "Okay, thank you." We need, we need to be talking to them. Something's gotta be straightened out there. I know you've got a lot on your plate. I understand that. But you're not hearing those people that call me, that the widow woman, that her husband passed away. And we lost four or five in the last couple of weeks, four or five guys. And she says, "Well, I don't know what to do. John always said if we had a problem, call George." Well, I'm gonna go dig John up and tell him something else. But the point is, we're, we've got people out there that are suffering. And I don't know, you know, I don't know what you do about it. But remember this, that buck stops right here. It stops right here. You've got it in your lap. Just like when things happen with the retirees, it's in my pocket. So, I'm willing, I have, you don't, I didn't have to introduce myself because I'm here. If you need me, I will be here to do what I can to help us work something out. But believe me, we've got to get something worked out. Thank you very much.
Thanks, George. Richard Boyd? Oh. Kelly Dragus?
Hello. Kelly Dragus, 3008 Northwest 191st Harris. I was, I served as an Oklahoma City police officer for 13 years myself. My husband was Sergeant Jonathan Dragus. He was killed in the line of duty in October 20th, 2005, almost 11 years ago. And at the time, my son was five months old, and I was widowed at 28. About three years ago, I made the really difficult decision to leave the department to be able to, because my son needed, needed more of my time and attention than I was able to give him as a full-time police officer while taking care of all the necessary things it takes to run the household. As a surviving spouse and child, we were able to stay on the city's insurance plan, but we had to pay retiree rates. Insurance for us is an absolute necessity. My son and I both have different medical issues that just, we have to have insurance. My son's always been a handful, and the ADHD diagnosis was not a surprise. Neither was the severe allergies and asthma, because my husband and I both suffered from those things. What I didn't expect was the autism spectrum disorder and sensory processing issues that he's been diagnosed with. Having a child on the autism spectrum is challenging for any family. But raising a child struggling with these issues, not to mention the never-ending grief of losing my husband and having no explanation when my child asks why God allowed his dad to die before he could ever make any memories with him. I assure you, sometimes that's more than I can take. Sometimes I'm not even sure how I've survived these past 11 years. If all that wasn't enough to deal with, I've also had several battles with the insurance companies to cover the therapy my son needs and trying to get prescription covered as well. Currently, my son's in social therapy once a week, which is, he's made great progress with. But 100% of that cost is not covered by insurance, and therefore, I have to pay every bit of it out of pocket. My fixed income situation is not like many other retirees. They, like my husband, gave many years of their lives protecting and serving the city. And now they need us to do a better job serving them by helping to keep their rates more affordable. Next year, I will begin paying over $1,000 a month for insurance for just my son and I. And that's not including any of the out-of-pocket expenses, deductibles, co-insurance, all those things. I would like to take this opportunity to ask you all to consider allowing the three current surviving families of the officers killed in the line of duty to pay insurance at active officer insurance rates. This affects the families of Kelly Chase, Sergeant Robert Douglas, and my husband, Sergeant Jonathan Dragus. If my husband hadn't died trying to keep the city safe for each one of you and the people you represent, he'd still be out patrolling the streets and living every minute of it. And we'd be paying insurance rate at active officer prices. I truly hope you will give this some serious thought and consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kelly. No one else has signed up to speak. Is there anybody that would like to speak that has not signed up? Okay, we have executive session. I did want to, you know, I'll speak to this to the extent that I can. I, and I guess the council found out since our last meeting, so we just found out about this hall a few days ago. And I think, you know, this is part of the national healthcare crisis that is going across America. Employers and, and people in all 50 states are dealing with it. You know, don't have a solution today. I suspect we're, you know, we're gonna try and do something. We're gonna try and talk to the, to the active duty unions and see if there is some way we can, you know, better serve that, that niche, that retiree who is not yet 65 and not yet available for Medicare. But there aren't easy answers here, and there aren't, there aren't easy answers in the private sector. There aren't easy answers in the public sector. And, you know, I felt your anger today. I understand your frustration. And I'm hoping that we can figure out something that lessens the damage here because I understand what a blow this could be. And to have something this significant come upon you relatively on a, on a, on a short basis is, is not acceptable. And so, we're, you know, we're going through, how did we allow this to happen? How did this happen? And we've looked at all the claims and that have been handed out and trying to do the math of the operator of our insurance plan, trying to see what other options we can offer our retirees that might better suit their individual needs. And Ed, I see you leaning forward, and you obviously know more about the healthcare industry than the rest of us. But, you know, I, I, I hope the people that spoke today understand that, you know, the council's not the enemy in this. We're, we, we, we want to do the right thing. We're just, at this point, not sure exactly what our options are.
Just one idea as a, for the council to consider as a policy is, you know, we self-insure. So, we spend on active duty $75 million on health insurance claims, and then retirees are on top of that. I mean, any entity that is making those kind of purchases would have potentially tremendous purchasing power just through economies of scale. And then I think maybe you, we're starting to see through the CARE ATC that it may be possible for the city to provide some healthcare services to basically effectively pay ourselves, to recoup that money. And maybe one example, we talked about pharmaceuticals, which I think is a huge percentage of that $75 million. But maybe things like imaging, like an MRI. Let's say that the city purchased an MRI or, and we have the space, we had it in one area. I know we looked at this briefly. Firefighters alone did more than 300 MRIs in a year. That's just the firefighters. If you take all the 4,300 employees and then add the retirees, and then whoever else is around us downtown that just happens to need to get an MRI and might come to our facility out of convenience, I believe an MRI facility would make money. I mean, I think it would save, at a minimum, would save us that revenue. Now, it might require a compromise. We might not be able to go to the MRI facility right next to us. We might have to drive downtown and do an MRI where the city provides it. But that kind of compromise is, is a way that we could all work together and, and start to save money. And the copays is another example. We might have to, there might have to be some compromise in terms of going to this particular doctor that we want to. But I think the, it is gonna take something out of the box because the insurance costs are going to continue to rise. There's no stopping that. And so, starting to think of things outside the box like that, it would require a policy change on the, on the part of the council. And I just ask that maybe we start to explore that. Is there a way that we could purchase certain very commonly-used drugs and pharmaceuticals, use the purchasing power of the city to get those costs way down and, and try and keep the cost down for everybody? That's, that's a policy change, and so I just mentioned it as an idea to start to explore. Thanks.
Anybody else want, council want to speak? We have executive session. We'll be back.